Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, October 24th, 2023 Business Meeting at the Olympia City Council. For the record, we have a quorum. All council members are present with no announcements tonight. We will be going on to approving tonight's agenda with one change. We have been asked to change the order of our business items. So specifically, we are going to be changing item 6B and making it 6C. So 6B was the approval of an ordinance amending Olympia Municipal Code Chapters 4.70 related to residential parking. That will now be 6B and 6C will now be the Council of Neighborhoods Association Memorandum of Understanding Discussion. Does that all make sense? All right. So, um, thank you. I need a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Agenda is adopted. Uh, we're now moving on to public comment. This is a time that a council gives to our community members to speak to us regarding city issues. You have two minutes. We have a hybrid approach to this, so some people can tune in by Zoom and give their comments as well as being in chambers. So we've got two people signed up for remote and two people in chambers. So I will start with the remote first. We have two minutes. There's a countdown clock. We'll boost guide timer up there. So pay attention to that. And first I have Lisa Reiner, followed by Judy Barton. Lisa's traveling.
Uh, Lisa needs to turn off her camera where she can speak. She should be able to.
Ms. Reiner, can you turn on your camera or your microphone? There you are.
It doesn't look like.
All right, we can see you. Can you turn on your, your audio, please? Uh, Ms. Reiner, we still cannot hear you. Oh. Sorry, we're gonna troubleshoot it on our end. Do we have a status?
She's still a panelist. Her camera is off.
But what about the microphone?
Uh, that seems to be working on our end.
Oh, so the, the audio is our issue?
Uh, we, as far as I can tell, our audio is working.
Oh, okay. So, uh, Ms. Reiner, our audio is working, but we can't hear you.
Okay.
So, uh, thank you. Um, could you please submit your comments in writing? Thank you so much. Uh, we're gonna move on to Judy Barton.
She's traveling.
Can you, uh, Ms. Barton, do you have your audio on?
This one, I think I can hear her.
It's lighting up.
You know, I, I'm so sorry, Ms. Barton. We are still working on our end, our audio.
Yeah.
Okay.
I can hear the sound come out of projector.
Okay. You know what? We're gonna take a five-minute recess to figure out our audio and then we'll, so if you can hang with us, we'll, we'll call you back up. Thank you. So we're gonna take a five-minute recess. It's now, uh, 6:05. We'll get back at 6:10.
That was a good idea, Danny.
Can you hear me?
Ah, we got it.
Okay.
Hold on one second. We'll bring you back.
Okay. All right, I'd like to ask my council members to come back to the dais. We are going to move forward with our public comment. Uh, do we want to try Ms. Reiner again? Since it was on our end. I don't know if, Kelly, is Ms. Reiner still in the queue?
She is still in the queue.
Okay. We'll start with, uh, Ms. Barton and then we'll go to Ms. Reiner. We are in session.
Okay. Judy Barton, I live in southeast Olympia. I will be speaking on the multifamily tax exemption resolution. It was discovered this year that the MFTE is a tax shift. The city is not foregoing taxes on development. Instead, the costs are paid for by property owners. Larry Jesa estimated this amount to be around $83 yearly for the average home. However, the city has never come up with its own estimate. The region for the tax exemption is being greatly expanded with the proposal. It includes much of the east side and the Capitol Mall triangle area, which alone, under EIS Option 3, could create 3,000 new units. The result will be an even greater tax shift burden. As a result, it will raise rents because landlords will increase rents to cover property taxes. Additionally, many homeowners are just barely able to cover costs of owning a home, especially with higher mortgage rates and inflation. People on fixed incomes are particularly, particularly affected. Before it sets policy or even has a hearing, the council and the public should know the amount of the tax shift burden under different development scenarios. There should be a fiscal note. Why go the circuitous route in the first place? Since voters are being taxed with the MFTE to subsidize development, which today has not produced affordable downtown housing. Why not instead ask voters directly to approve a property tax to build guaranteed affordable housing? Seattle currently has such a proposal in their upcoming election. Thank you for my, taking my comments.
Thank you and thank you, thank you and thank you for your patience. Uh, next, we're gonna go back to Lisa Reiner. Lisa's traveling.
Yes, thank you. Um, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Thank you so much. Yes, I, um, I was also going to speak about this multifamily tax exemption. I know that our neighborhood over near the Handy Pantry on Division on the west side of Olympia is one of the areas that is being considered for this multifamily tax exemption. And as the last speaker said, basically, it's subsidizing developers. Developers would be allowed to come into our neighborhood and, uh, build these buildings and then they don't have to pay taxes on the buildings, but the rest of the community does. And that really hits hard, uh, to the apartment dwellers and the people on fixed incomes. It seems like many of us in the neighborhood are on fixed incomes. Uh, when you get retired, basically you are on a fixed income and there's no extra money coming in. Many of us have been hit hard with medical bills. We get older, medical bills. Many of us are having to move out, leave our homes. And, um, maybe the city council is hoping for that. Maybe, uh, that's what these multifamily tax exemptions, trying to get a certain segment of the population to move out of the neighborhoods. I don't know. These don't make sense to me. These exemptions for the developers to build in these neighborhoods and pay no taxes does not make sense to me. And especially, it's not affordable housing that's being built. It's market rate. Market rate is very high rents and very high, um, costs for housing. And so all of these issues are problematic. I know I was with a group of neighbors the other day standing near the Handy Pantry and they couldn't believe that city council was even considering this. And they clung their hands. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll be moving to those that have signed up to make comments in chambers. I've got Bob Jacobs, followed by Leslie Cushman.
Good evening. I'm Bob Jacobs. I live at 720 Governor Stevens in Olympia. I'm here to speak on Agenda Item 4D, dealing with the multifamily tax exemption program, popular tonight. Supreme Court Justice Oliver Wendell Holmes famously said that, quote, "Taxes are the price we pay to live in a civilized society." I think Holmes is exactly correct. I pay my taxes every year on time without objection. We should all do that. What I object to about the multifamily tax exemption program is that it forces all of us residents to pay the taxes of a few wealthy developers and their wealthy investors. These are people who rake in tens of millions in profits on the very properties whose taxes we are forced to pay. This is about as unfair a tax situation as I can imagine. Not only that, but the multifamily tax exemption program is based on a faulty notion that builders won't build housing in some places unless we bribe them. It is also based on bad analysis, misinterpreted statistics, and apparently ignorance of the fact that land values are residuals in development finance. I urge you not to vote as suggested in Agenda Item 4D and instead to vote to eliminate this program immediately, though I assume the contracts already in place will have to be honored. If however, you decide to set a hearing as suggested in Agenda Item 4D, I urge you to do two things in advance. First, find out how many tens of millions of dollars recipients are raking in on the exempted properties, just in increased property values alone. And second, learn about residuals and land values. This would be helpful to you in your further dealings with this program and others. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, last, we have Leslie Cushman.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Leslie Cushman for the record, and I'm a community member working on police accountability, accountability issues. I'm gonna lower that a bit. I want to remind you that October 22nd marked 14 months since Timothy Green was killed by an Olympia police officer. I knew Tim. His mother is my friend. Some disturbing delays that message disregard on your part. First, no word yet from the Thurston County Prosecutor regarding the criminal charges. I know that's not your duty, but you have influence there, I hope. Second, the city has not done an internal investigation. You have the extensive investigation done by the Capitol Metro team, and there is nothing legally stopping you from looking at how to improve your practices. Third, the city has not changed a single policy. I can't imagine you were satisfied with what happened that day. Please understand it is hard for the public to believe that you have any concerns based on your lack of action. There's a lot of powerful optics going on here. Fourth, it is troubling. The city has opted to ignore the deadly use of force in the statistics available through the police auditor. It's not registered in your use of force statistics for 2022. It doesn't show up in 2023, and there's no reason for this. I understand your rationale as you're waiting for the prosecutor, but this is wildly misleading and out of step with the rest of the data in the auditor report. There is nothing at all in the data that requires charges or outcomes. It's just about use of force. It's a number. Was there a use of force? Yes or no? You can't look at any data in your reports and see that there was a police shooting that day or any use of tasers that day. So it's really misleading and it's disturbing to the family. The city has a lot of work to do to improve its transparency as it works to address community oversight. Tim Green's family deserves justice. It deserves you to be fully transparent and you provide a path for accountability. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment for this evening. Any questions or comments, uh, questions for staff or comments from the dais? Mayor Pro Tim Gilman.
I, I would love to hear about the, um, police auditor's last report not including that use of deadly force. And I don't know if either council member Wind or Chief, if you.
Our, our police chief, Rich Allen. Thank you.
Uh, good evening. Uh, for the record, Rich Allen, Police Chief. And, uh, no, the auditor did not include that in her report, um, simply because she audits our work and we haven't done that work yet. We haven't reviewed that incident. So she doesn't have those statistics. Once we get the findings from the Clark County Prosecutor's Office, we'll run our internal review and then we'll provide everything to the auditor. We'll work with the auditor to backdate, if you will, to update the 22 statistics to make sure that's reflected.
Does that help? All right. Uh, Councilmember Madron.
Is it possible in those reports to report it and say pending?
I'm sure we can. Yeah, I can work with the auditor.
I think that would be, at, at the very least, be a good practice moving forward. Thank you.
All right. Uh, Councilmember Payne.
Yes. Um, first of all, thank you to everybody that spoke this evening for a public comment, but, uh, Ms. Cushman, uh, you had mentioned, uh, about, uh, us not acting or on policy just yet. Uh, my understanding is, is that the reason that we're doing that is because we don't know all of the facts of what has happened just yet. Uh, and so in, in my opinion, it would be a little bit, uh, sort of jumping ahead to sort of act when we don't exactly know exactly everything that occurred, uh, that day and where the gaps are. Uh, we can make guesses or, you know, what it may look like, but at the end of the day, um, we need those findings from the prosecutor to know, uh, how to proceed. And so that is what we're waiting for. I know that's not the answer that you came, uh, looking for this evening, but I'm happy to engage with you on further discussion on that.
All right. Thank you. Oh, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim Gilman.
Chief, while we still have you here, I'm, so I have a different understanding. I want to check that the, um, the policy changes would be about addressing generally how the department operates, how we respond. I understand the prosecutor's investigation is about whether or not either the department or the individual officers, um, did something wrong, that they're culpable for, for something. Is, is that correct?
Yes. The, the Clark County Prosecutor's Office is specifically looking for a criminal act committed by the police officers. Once we get a determination and, and see that report, then we will, uh, conduct our internal review that's focused on any policy or training issues that we might have at the police department.
That's good. So, so they're, to my mind, they're kind of separate. We know we've had several people over the last decade, more over a longer window, die while, uh, being brought into compliance, for lack of a better word. And so there's, there's a, there's a broader picture to consider how we lessen the risk of somebody being gravely injured or killed, um, while we're interacting with them.
All right. I think we're going to close public comment. Thank you, Chief, and, uh, move on to tonight's consent calendar. I need a motion to approve. So move.
Second.
Uh, I have one poll that I've heard of, and that's item 4D, which we heard, um, reference to this evening to have, uh, our housing program, uh, Director Darren Lightfoot speak to that. Is there any other questions or, or polls? All right. So we are pulling 4D for comment approval of a resolution setting the date for a public hearing on proposed designation of certain additional areas of the city as additional residential targeted areas for purposes of the multifamily tax exemption.
Hello, my name is Darren Lightfoot. I'm the Director of Housing and Homeless Response. As you can see by the title of tonight's resolution, we're really working to follow the requirements within the ordinance. And the, the ordinance requires that there is a public hearing whenever the boundary is changed to the, to the MFTE. So the public hearing after tonight's resolution will be set for November 14th, and at that hearing, we'll be covering the proposed boundary changes, um, and allowing folks to comment for public hearing and of course, um, comment on the, the whole program, allowing folks to see the changes within the, within the program that we're looking to really target more affordable housing and the other pieces that are coming along with our proposal, including the boundary changes. We're gonna be working, um, to have all of those recommendations live early on our website and hopefully posting that report sooner so people can really take a look on it, at it and be prepared for the public hearing on the 14th. Um, that public hearing will be abbreviated. It'll be a little bit shorter. And then there'll be a larger presentation on December 12th and other business for council to hear really more specifics on what we're looking to do with the program. So just want to give everyone a heads up that at the public hearing, I'll be presenting more about the boundary changes, of course, can hear public comment on all of it. And then if folks were to come back on that December 12th day, it'll be a other business item and we can go into more detail in council and the public can hear our proposal for the program changes.
Any questions? I've got Councilmember Partially, followed by Councilmember Cooper.
Uh, just for clarity's sake, for the public, we're referring to the 12-year MFTE, which is for affordable housing, not for both.
The full program has changes to the full program.
But this hearing?
And 12-year. The hearing is for the MFTE full boundary changes for the full program, the eight-year and the 12.
Okay. Thank you. That's what we needed to, cause it, you know, there's a couple of places anyways.
Yeah. Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Ms. Elby. Um, Darren, I know you don't want to give away the whole program now, but, you know, you're not really talking about casting an MFTE net over all of the single-family neighborhoods in Olympia. And you're being very targeted in your approach to try to get us more affordable housing, even out of the eight-year exemption, correct?
Absolutely. I think that we're going to look to pitch that the multifamily tax exemption, which is written by the state and, um, is set up to really focus on density. But Olympia has chosen to look at that a bit more critically and see how we can target this program to affordable housing development. This incentive is going to align with all of our other affordable housing incentives. And we think that because the way our team is positioned right now, we have a lot of good relationships with affordable housing developers, and we're going to be able to see the exemption used in a different way than it is used right now. And no, it is not being set to be a cast through all single-family neighborhoods. It's in our, in our urban density areas, in our neighborhood centers, where we do need to work to create additional units um, in our community to address many goals, our climate goals, housing goals, addressing density. So, um, yeah, we'll go over all of that. Not all the single-family zones and targeting affordable housing.
Thank you for clarifying that we're not changing our comprehensive plan through this action and we're really tar, sticking to the same areas we have planned for density. And I hope that everyone will take the time to sit with it and provide, uh, um, as, as informed a comment as they can to the public hearing. Cause I think that's important to help us flex the, the final policy in the end. Thank you.
All right. Mayor Pro Tim Gilman.
So, yeah, um, to that, that notion of flexing the policy in the end. What, what I'm understanding is we'll publish the proposed changes sometime between now and the public hearing. But the staff presentation of the public hearing will be narrowly about the geographic expansion. And then at the December meeting, we'll have a more full staff presentation, but you also are hoping that we'll take action that evening.
Yes, all the materials will be live before then, so everything being covered at the full presentation will be live in this next week for preparation of the public hearing. And then at the 12th, there'll be the other business, first reading, and then second meeting will come the following council meeting.
So really any flexing, any modifications that would come from council would come during the conversation after your presentation at that December meeting? That's kind of the window?
Yeah, or, or before second reading, before it's finally adopted the next meeting.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you. I, I want to just point out something that the mayor Pro Tim made me think of, and that's that because of the public hearing only being about the boundary, the conversation about the, all of the rest of the MFTE can continue in public comment in our regular meetings. Like it's, it's an okay topic from here through December 21st. Thank you.
Plus, since we changed our public comment rules, uh, that you can speak to something irregardless of whether it's a, um, been on a public hearing in the last 45 days or the next 45 days, you can still speak to it. Yeah, I know, after 10 years. Uh, all right. Thank you so much. So as a reminder, we have a motion and a second to adopt tonight's consent calendar. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? We have consent calendar adopted. Thanks to staff for all their amazing report work that they do for us. Uh, we are gonna move on to item 5A, and that's another public hearing for a grant application to the Department of Housing and Urban Development to pursue funding for affordable home ownership. And to speak to that, I'm gonna invite forward Jacinda Stelces, uh, who's our Affordable Housing Program Manager.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jacinda Stelces, um, again Affordable Housing Program Manager. Um, as you mentioned, Mayor, we are here today for a public hearing, or tonight, I guess I should say, for a public hearing on a grant proposal. Um, so I'll provide a little bit of information about that draft proposal, um, and then of course, uh, any public comments. All right. Uh, so staff has put together a draft proposal for pro-housing grant. Uh, this is a, a grant through HUD, U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. It's a one-time grant. And, or one-time funding. Uh, the funding must be applied for through jurisdictions and awards are between one and 10 million. Uh, the period of time in which the funds could be expended are January 24, 2024, excuse me, through September 2029. Our application is due, um, in final form, November 6th. I'm sorry, I just totally skipped a slide for you guys. Starting off great, right? Um, so our proposal is focusing on, um, three activities. Uh, all of these activities are focused on increasing home ownership for low-income individuals earning 80% of area median income or below. Um, so our first activity here, and I will describe briefly each of these, um, providing some funding to Thurston Housing Land Trust to build capacity, uh, creating and carrying out a plan to implement our affordable housing, um, home ownership research study, and then some capital funding to produce and preserve, um, home ownership units. Brief information about Thurston Housing Land Trust. Um, for those that don't know, they were established in 2018. Uh, the land trust model is that the organization purchases the land. The home buyer purchases the home and then has a long-term lease on the land. Uh, so this is a model that deepens affordability for home buyers. Um, and our land trust locally is one of 29 in Washington State. Uh, we're requesting through our grant proposal, 1.5 million. That would go to community outreach, strategic planning, staffing and operations, and would increase the land trust portfolio by 20 homes. Uh, again, this is over that grant period of approximately six years. Uh, the second item is an implementation plan for affordable home ownership research study. We're requesting 2.5 million for this activity. Uh, just want to note that this study is, um, in process now. That will conclude in December. Um, we've been in close contact, uh, with the consultant. And some of the initial input coming out of that study, um, there's been some, um, homebuyer counseling and down payment assistance. Are two items that are kind of in the study, um, that we are focusing on in our proposal. Uh, do want to note that this study will come to land use, um, in Environment Committee, uh, later this week, the 26th. Um, and the public is invited to that meeting, uh, to hear more about that study in general. Um, I won't spend too much time on these slides, uh, but did want to note, um, homebuyer counseling focuses on educating homebuyers, first-time homebuyers, um, about purchasing a home in that process. Uh, we do have those services available locally. They're very limited. They're often, um, presented by mortgage brokers or lenders. Um, and we'd really like to partner with community-based organizations, um, buy-in for organizations, um, so that we are targeting, um, households in a way that they might feel a little bit more comfortable and, and removing some of those barriers. Uh, down payment assistance, um, I won't cover the whole slide. I will say though, that, um, the Washington State Housing Finance Commission has an existing program. We would look to partner with them as well as have our own city program to leverage funding. And then this would align with the Covenant Home Ownership Act that was passed, um, locally in Washington. Um, and then this would align with the Covenant Home Ownership Act that was passed, um, locally in Washington State in this legislative session. Um, I won't go over in detail the slide, excuse me, but did want to include, um, in our packet, give you a little bit of an idea of, uh, what it really takes for low income, um, households to purchase a home, especially in our current market. Uh, our last activity, we are requesting five million in capital funding. Um, so this would be funding that we would target toward acquiring properties. Um, the city is, uh, we would target for City of Olympia, but would, um, uh, excuse me, consider regional opportunities and those would be ran through the Regional Housing Council if they, uh, come up. And the grant proposal is again being submitted by City of Olympia as a multi-jurisdictional, um, entity. So that allows us to work throughout Thurston County. Though, um, the city staff would primarily administer the program. Um, I do want to note that we are proposing in our, um, draft proposal that we would take a similar approach to how we've taken with other land acquisitions and purchasing, uh, partnering with developers to have those, um, uh, developed, um, and then selling, you know, for a low cost in return for a long-term, um, affordability. Uh, so Habitat for Humanity is, is a great example of what we did at thirty nine hundred Boulevard. Um, and they're building over a hundred homeownership units there. Uh, some other potential uses for the capital funds. Um, we know there's a need, um, for funding to help residents of manufactured homes or mobile home parks. Um, parks that are being sold and residents, uh, that may want to purchase those parks. Um, for critical home repairs or potentially even for renters, um, who also find themselves in the position of their landlord selling the home and they wish to purchase it themselves. Uh, and we do anticipate sixty to a hundred homeownership units through this capital funding, uh, bucket. And then our last activity, um, HUD does allow us to request funding for administering the program. Uh, so we are requesting, uh, one million. So our total grant proposal is ten million. Um, we are requesting the maximum amount of one million to administer. That would add, uh, someone to oversee the Affordable Housing Implementation Plan. Um, do all the great stuff that HUD requires with environmental reviews and underwriting, managing contracts, reporting, tracking outputs and outcomes. Uh, this, um, opportunity was published September seventh. So we've worked on a very tight timeline to put something together, um, put a proposal together. Um, the public hearing again is tonight. Our public comment period will end the twenty sixth of October. Um, and then we will consider all those public comments, summarize them, and that will be submitted with our grant proposal on November sixth. Um, that was originally due, uh, the thirtieth and has been pushed back by HUD and given us just a little bit more time. And then again, um, funds will be available January of two thousand twenty four and must be fully expended by September of two thousand twenty nine. Um, my information is at the top here. If anyone has questions about the proposal, uh, it is fairly lengthy, um, so I am available to, to answer any specifics. And then we do ask if there's any public comments, written public comments. Um, that those are sent to, um, the email listed with a pro housing subject line, so we can make sure that we capture all of those. And I am also available if any of you have questions.
Thank you, Jacinda. All right, so this is very exciting, very exciting. I know, uh, we all have, um, we're sending our w- well wishes and, you know, I know your team is great track record of, of winning grants, so hopefully uh, this will be one of those as well. I know I've got Mayor Pro Tem with a question followed by Councilmember Partially.
So first I'm holding my thumbs. But I, I just, I wanted to urge folks to look, even though it's, it's a big application, it's part of the packet for tonight's council meeting and the executive summary, the first two pages, I think, are the clearest statement of both our efforts to date and our intentions around this work. And I, I'm, I'm really excited about that. So if you're interested in making a comment, at least check out the executive summary of the proposal.
Good tip. All right, Councilmember Partially.
I absolutely agree, and, um, that's, you guys are kind of the rock star team, so I'm not going to jinx you because you don't want to ever say that. But my question is, um, it looks like they're awarding the money in January. When could you, when's the earliest you could hear?
Well, it's a great question. Um, we, this is HUD, uh, so.
December thirty first, is that what?
The government has to be.
They say it's available by January. We are hopeful that we'll actually be available by January. They have not let us know in the notice of funding opportunity when we can expect to hear back from them. I would as- assume by the end of the year, though, if, if they've committed to making funds available by the beginning of next year.
So I'm going to do something that's sort of like, um, drama and acting when they say break a leg. In my world and medicine, we always say that won't work because what you're trying to do is make sure that it does work.
Counterintuitive, reverse psychology. Um, I had, I had one question as well. Do you have it scaled? So in case you don't get a full allocation, what, what you would do?
Yes, so within the application, there is a, um, somewhat lengthy, I do admit, soundness of approach section. And at the end of that section, um, the application requires us to, to give kind of a minimum amount. And, um, and then obviously our full ask. And within that section, it also outlines what we could do with the minimum amount as well as what we could do outcomes with the, the full request.
Thank you for that. Anything else? Great. And we're going to just go ahead and open up the public hearing now. Right. So, uh, at this time, I will be opening the public hearing for a grant application to the Department of Housing and Urban Development to pursue funding for affordable homeownership. I did not have anybody that signed up tonight to speak ahead of time. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this, uh, proposal? Anybody? All right, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And we will hopefully hear before the end of the year. Thank you. All right, we're going to go on to other businesses this evening. The first item we have is a State of Lot, State of the Union, State of the Lot Clean Water Alliance briefing. And this is an annual, uh, report out that we get from the Executive Director of Lot, our Clean Water Alliance, and that's Matt Ken- Cannelli. And cue up his presentation and let you go.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I inherited that title, a state of the utility. It sounds so formal. It's nice. So Matt Cannelli, Executive Director of Lot Clean Water Alliance. Thank you for having me again to give you an update on how we're doing at Lot for you as a city. And also to talk about our carbon reduction efforts that we've been doing. And with me tonight is Wendy Stephenson. She's our Environmental Project Manager. Has done a lot of great work on carbon assessment for us, uh, as well. So I'd like to start off just with an update, um, I'm sorry, with a information item on what Lot is. Lot is Lacey, Olympia, Tumwater and Thurston County. And we're a regional wastewater utility. So back in nineteen seventy six, four partner governments, of which one city of Olympia came together and said it would be a lot better to treat wastewater as a region rather than each city having its own treatment plant. So our mission is to protect public health and the environment by cleaning water. That's what we do. We have a service area of about two hundred thousand people, but connected to the sewer is a hundred and twenty thousand because the rest of those folks are on septic tanks. City of Olympia, when I looked it up last, is about forty four percent of that. So when you come to Lot, you, and for those of you who have been there, and you're welcome to come if you haven't, uh, you'll see lots of equipment. You'll see things running and screening things out. You'll see big buildings full of process equipment, giant pumps. Uh, you'll see rivers of brown water and lots of fun things that are happening with bacteria and treating that water. And then you start to see it getting clean again, big open tanks where we do treatment, and ultimately you do see that clean water. And that's all the things we do down here downtown at the Bud Inlet Treatment Plant. So thirteen million gallons per day of raw sewage comes down to us every day that we make clean again. And if you think about how much that is, if you take a football field and build a four-story building on it and fill that entire thing with raw sewage, that's what comes down to Lot every day, and that's what we make clean for you and the environment. And we're proud of the work we do. We do the highest level of treatment on Puget Sound. And we just spent twenty nine million dollars on a construction project to stay that way. We're doing something called nitrogen removal, and we're the, uh, only treatment plant right now on Puget Sound doing that. And lots of other treatment plants are being regulated into that. Um, but when you compare our treatment, even across the nation, we're getting some of the highest treatment values for what we do. We just got a gold award for, in two thousand twenty two, from the National Association of Clean Water Agencies. Basically, that's validation, uh, for you and for the public that says that we're doing our job, meeting permit and in compliance. We give tours to state regulators often, ecology. We have a close relationship with them. They bring folks down, Department of Health. Uh, we were just at a conference a few weeks ago in Chicago, a national conference that we were invited to participate and share the good work we're doing on nu- nu- nitrogen removal, how low levels of nitrogen are actually in our effluent. People are really interested. How many sensors did you do? How did you pull this off? Including, uh, recently when I was asked to be, participate in, uh, State House Committee, Environment and Energy and talk about what we do at Lot. So you think about wastewater service and Olympia has a special connection to the Bud Inlet Treatment Plant because it started as a City of Olympia Treatment Plant. And I found this cool picture from the archives. It's from nineteen fifty seven. You can kind of see the, the stack in the distance. And, you know, think about just eight years before this picture, and there was no treatment plant at all. It was all flowing down into Bud Inlet. And then there's a treatment plant built. And the mentality of the time and for a long time with treatment plants is very much a commodity-based service. Okay, meet regulations, get the job done for the lowest cost, and cost is always important. Um, but then things started to move a little bit further into a public health awareness. And it starts to think about, okay, more environmental protection. Can we use this for education? Can we do resource recovery? That's the place that Lot is now, and we have been for quite some time. Biogas reuse is one of those recovered resources. So if you drive by on Franklin Street towards the port, just on the west side of the treatment plant, you'll see this picture and you'll see these giant tanks. And those are digesters where we stabilize the solids from the process and capture that methane to use for energy, electricity and heat. So we heat our process, but we also provide heat to our admin building and to the Hands-on Children's Museum. We use, reuse a hundred percent of those stabilized biosolids. That's part of a program in Eastern Washington, applied to agricultural fields. You can see the difference in the wheat when it's applied with biosolids versus not, that the farmers really like this product. And then reclaim water. That's what people are most familiar with. Reclaim water, really not. It's irrigating down at the Capitol. Um, you see it in, uh, our, our fountain out front of our admin building, but also that stream in front of the Hands-on Children's Museum. We do groundwater infiltration out at Hawks Prairie, and the Tumwater Golf Course is irrigated with reclaimed water. Education, uh, looked up some latest numbers on how we're doing on that. And I'm happy to report we're back to pre-pandemic numbers there as well. So seven thousand visitors through September have come through the Wet Science Center. And Olympia School District is part of many field trips, so seven hundred and thirty-five students have come through. Um, I met with Patrick Murphy, one-on-one. He toured the planet. He's very supportive of, of that connection from Olympia. So when you think about wastewater and where it's going into the future, and, and originally it's that cost of service, and at its core, it is cost of service. We need to meet regulations. We need to effectively, uh, treat wastewater in a cost-effective way at public health. But the wastewater utility of the future, today is what we're doing. This is where Lot is moving into, and this is part of where um, utilities are trending in the future. It's about that public service. It's about a community connection. And about thinking about climate resilience and the role that utilities have to play in that. Lot is the largest power user in Thurston County, as I understand. So we, you know, we have a significant role to play in climate, uh, resilience. And things like sea level rise, those type of things that we participate in. So that's the future, and that's the area that we're moving more and more into. So community support in that kind of third wave of thinking. It's septic to sewer conversions and providing connection fee support for that. It's low-income housing, affordable housing, we were talking about tonight. Uh, sanitation resources, we've been part of the hygiene trailers that have been provided for the houseless population. And then it's being part of a coalition and looking at water quality overall. So that's the Capital Lake Deschutes Estuary conversation, and we've been part of, part of that MOU development. You know, looking at, um, the role to play that we have as a utility, but also our business case is clean water mean, means less regulations on Lot because it's more cost-effective for the community to address water quality maybe elsewhere than continue to put further and further regulations on a treatment plant doing the high level of treatment that we're doing. So in that climate space, uh, this is a, a graph of where things have trended over time, the baseline year being twenty fifteen. And the carbon, this is our carbon footprint. And in general, there's a little bit of a trend down, you know, things vary. Remember populations increasing over time and we have more treatment, uh, or more flow to process, more things to process. So when you look at a per capita basis, it's about a twenty-eight percent decrease. But the thing that strikes me about this graph, you look at twenty twenty-two, that bar, it's eighty-nine percent is electricity. So that's a huge portion of that. Um, and it's kind of daunting. That's a lot, that's a lot of power that we use, but I actually see opportunity here because as Puget Sound Energy continues to make the grid greener, our footprint also starts to go down. There's so much effort right now to get things electrified. And eighty-nine percent of our footprint is electrified. So I see that as opportunity. We still have work to do in, in reductions, which I'll share with you. But, um, eighty-nine percent is a significant portion of it. So we'll still keep focusing on this energy reduction. So that project, that twenty-nine million dollar project we just did, we reconfigured the treatment plant, upgraded it to a second generation nutrient removal. But through new technology and different ways of pumping and combining tanks, we were able to save two and a half million kilowatt hours per year. And this was a, this was actually an assessment from a consultant that took uh, stamp before and after the project. So we're eligible for a one point one million dollar Puget Sound Energy Grant, uh, that hopefully we'll hear back soon. And then you take that, uh, that savings and convert it into carbon footprint. And I love the EPA website. You could just pop in carbon footprint. It'll give you some great stats. So I grabbed three of them. One is, so it's night equivalent to nineteen thousand trees, two hundred and twenty-two homes, or almost three million driven miles. So that electrical footprint I showed you, the eighty-nine percent, I mean, that number is going to continue to go down as we make big impacts on projects like that. When we look at what we, our carbon footprint outside of electricity, there's things that we can change more easily than others. Um, certainly travel, where I was looking to that, that's a small sliver, but those, that denitrification and nitrogen discharge, that's part of our process. That's how we treat wastewater. So we're going to measure that a little bit more. But that's part of cleaning water to that high level that we do. Uh, natural gas usage, we have some new plans to reduce that. But in the very cold parts of the winter, we do need to supplement and heat our digestion process. So we don't have enough biogas to heat our process. And then methanol, that's a carbon source that we use for treatment. Methanol, we just ran a pilot and we're able to get off of methanol. So that whole bar is going to go away. We actually have a natural product that we can use for carbon instead. And then biosolids is a net negative, so that's actually a carbon sink, part of our assessment. So we're planning on doing a, a carbon reduction plan. We're exploring that now. Um, we'll be talking to our board further about that, um, transitioning our fleet to electric, uh, teller work policy, and also looking at energy savings on all of our big projects. All of our projects, frankly. Uh, one exciting one to share with you is when we upgraded our Centrate Building. It's, it's a process building, and I won't get into the details of what happened inside the building, but the roof needs to be replaced. So it's a great opportunity to put solar on the roof because you can combine it and get a tax credit. The Inflation Reduction Act, we might get up to forty percent tax credit. Um, but this is a big installation of a hundred and ninety-six thousand kilowatt hours per year. So we actually charge our electric vehicles on the side of that. So on a sunny day, that's definitely pl- powering all of our electric vehicles. In fact, on a sunny day and a snapshot of an hour in the summer, it'll power the whole building. Now, obviously that's going to vary, and at night we don't produce power, but overall, it's, it's part of that offset picture. If we're always going to have to treat, uh, wastewater and there's that nitrification kind of piece on that carbon hit, we need to do things like this to help offset it. And it's all part of our master plan. I spoke with you earlier this year that we have a master plan through two thousand fifty. Lots of capital projects, lots of flexibility, but the focus is on our existing. our existing treatment facilities, not building new facilities, but getting more efficiency out of our existing ones. And our recent upgrade has showed us that's possible. Because capital projects are almost three quarters of our budget. This is a biennial budget picture. So 89.3 million dollars is what we need to spend in a biennium to keep all of this going. And how we finance that is a combination of monthly fees and capacity development charges or connection fees. So the monthly fee, the lot charge that the rate payer sees on his bill is combined with the city of Olympia's fee for the collection system that you all run. And everything that goes with it, the people, the lift stations, the power, and then you get a wastewater rate. And so that $44.80 to lot charges per month and you add it to the city rate. We do an analysis every two years as part of our biennial budget. And this is where the city of Olympia ranks on that list. It's below average. So when you consider highest level of treatment in Puget Sound, some of the highest in the entire country and below average rates. That's a good value for the rate pair. So just in closing, the, I wanted to thank staff that have contributed. I wanted to share some things that we're working on together. Jay Burney and I coordinate and staff coordinate really well. It's capital projects. It's a septic to sewer conversions. It's the hygiene trailers for the public health emergency support and the pump outs. Water conservation has been in place for a long time. The Capitol Lake Deschutes Estuary effort, sea level rise, affordable housing support. And this is a big list that we, that we coordinate well on. And the one I'll add to it is the upcoming strategic planning. So we do a six year strategic plan. 2025 through 2030 is our next piece. And this is where our staff is going to reach out to city staff and really ask those community support questions. That kind of next wave of thinking, the utility of the future saying, what more can Lot provide? You know, well, we run that through our mission and business case and everything, but really ask the city directly. All of the things that are on this list have kind of come out of those conversations, but it's really important to get part of that early in our strategic plan to make sure that we address as much as possible into the future. So thank you for that. And thank you to President of our Board, our, our Lot Board is our President partially, Councilmember partially. So thank you as well. And I'll take any questions you have.
Absolutely. But before we go to questions, I just want you to know that Lisa reports out on every lot meeting in such amazing detail. That I feel like I know so much more about everything you do since you've been on that board. So
That's great.
I just want to report back.
Thank you.
Yes, you're well represented up here.
Okay, good.
And any questions? I have a customer of my drone.
I'm curious about reclaimed water. Do you currently produce more reclaimed water that we use in the community?
No, we actually produce as much as will be used other than what we infiltrate into the ground like at Hawks Prairie. So we have a satellite facility at our Martin Way reclaimed water plant. That that's used by the city of Lacey. And then when it's not used by the city of Lacey, it's done for groundwater infiltration. So that whole plant is just operating, but the Bud Inlet Treatment Plant here in Olympia. For the 13 million gallons per day that we get, about 2 million gallons is produced as reclaimed water. And primarily because it's really only used in the summer for offsets for irrigation purposes. So during the winter months, we do shut that down.
Okay, okay. But if we, if there were more opportunities around that, then you're, you're going to produce as much as we need.
Absolutely. That's part of the master plan. Right. We'll expand reclaimed water as the need develops.
Excellent. That's, that's good to know. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you, Mayor Selby. Thanks for the energy information. You're doing, you're doing great.
Thank you.
It, it makes me wonder if anybody thought about putting a turbine on the outfall, like so you can generate energy back.
We have talked a lot about those, those, we actually need to pump out our outfalls. So we'd be, you know, it'd be redundant, but there are places that we are looking at that. Yeah.
So in, in, in a real question in that is when you said your biosolids are net negative, does that include the transportation or is that in the travel line at the top?
And Wendy, who had to run to a family matter. That's why I asked her to come to answer that. I'll have to get back to you. I, I'm nearly positive that that is a holistic look at our biosolids because we do need to truck it across the mountains because that's for the drier areas in the wintertime. So I want to say that it does include that, but I would need to check.
Okay, great. I appreciate it. Yes.
All right. Next I have Mayor Pro Tim Gilman, followed by Councilmember Partially.
Matt, I'm, I'm curious if there's any more that Olympia needs. I mean, I'm, I'm really impressed with all the continuing evolution of the treatment facility. And I'm wondering in terms of total capacity for the facility and our projected growth. And about, you know, there was quite a bit of work about our inflow and separating stormwater and sewer lines. And there's, there's a little bit of that left. And I'm wanting, how, how crucial is that to you? Either conservation or our continuing to, to clean up stormwater that comes to the plant?
It is that 13 million gallons per day that comes in, when it's really raining, we could get up to 65 million gallons per day. So, you know, make that quite a bit larger. However, we're not primarily driven as much on pure flow anymore. As much as we are nutrients, because regulations have gotten to the point that that is the limiting thing. But when more flow comes in, we need to spend more energy and pump it. So any, any separation of stormwater and sanitary that we can do will benefit. And there's cost effectiveness thresholds that look at that. And so together, city staff, we were constantly talking about, are there opportunities that arise? We're able to manage that type of flow because the system was built that way. But it's important that we continue to look for opportunities there. Yeah.
All right. And next we have Councilmember Partially.
Just one comment. Jim, we've talked about the energy differential between discharging freshwater and saltwater. There's an electrical potential there. And Stanford down in south of San Francisco is actually doing a pilot study because they discharge into the Pacific. I bug mad about that all the time.
Yeah.
Can you just highlight some of the discussions about reclaimed water and making it potable that we potentially will pursue in the future? As water becomes more of a commodity and resource and climate change.
Sure. So Councilmember Partially, and I had an opportunity to attend a conference earlier this year and you know, you hear from places in Florida and Texas and California, right? They're, they're really stressed for water. And the questions come up, where do they wish they were 20 years ago? And it's funny because it's like, oh, wow, that's us, right? And although maybe 20 years, it's probably further. But if you look in the further, you look further out and you say, at some point, each community is going to hit that threshold by which they need to look at water holistically, you know, the one water, the circular water economy. And so what we've talked about is possibly, you know, wading into demonstration projects just to communicate that water should be judged by its quality and not its history. And are there ways to do that? And are there ways to start that education around, around that? So you see that in other places where they brew beer or they do things like that. And it's just about trying to get over that. What we have in our minds, that if you actually get to water of, of whatever quality, that it should be judged that way. So that's something with this strategic plan that we'll be talking to the board further about, about where Lot should be with that. Yeah.
Definitely need to build a lot of trust with your community.
Oh yeah. No, it's a generational conversation. This is nothing.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions for that? Thank you again so, so much. And I'm sorry that your climate person had to.
But I will follow up on that question.
I hope everything's okay.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. All right. Now we're going to go on to item six B, which is now the approval of an ordinance amending Olympia Municipal Code Chapters 4.70 related to residential parking. And we've got Max Dejarnet, our program analyst with community planning and development. And like, are you our, like parkings czar?
Yes, I'm the parking program analyst.
Yes.
I don't, I don't think quite czar.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Selby and members of the council. For the record, my name is Max Dejarnet. I'm the parking program analyst for community planning and development. And I'm here tonight to discuss an ordinance amending Olympia Municipal Code Chapter 4.7 relating to residential parking. So before we get into the particulars of the ordinance itself, I'd like to zoom out to note that tonight's action fits into our parking strategy's aim to support our community's vision. For downtown's future is both a regional hub as well as a home to increasing number of Olympians. The parking strategy, which was adopted by city council in April of 2019 and can be found on the city's website outlines, outlines an approach that balances competing needs of various groups with decreasing parking supply and growing demand. Using updated technology, optimizing both on and off street parking experiences and focusing on the unique needs of downtown residents, employees and event attendees and people with disabilities. We follow this roadmap to help make downtown a great place to live, work and play. So zooming back in, tonight's action focuses on one item from the strategy, residential parking permits. As you can see from the slide, strategy item 5 dot four guides us to align on-street permits with hourly and daily rates. It recommends a tiered fee structure with the highest fees located in the center of downtown or residential zone seven. The purpose is to encourage long-term parking in off-street options where users can park without competing with shorter term visitors who might otherwise avoid downtown as the result of struggling to find available parking close to their destination. As it stands at $5 per month, the price for residential on-street permits is far below the monthly cost of any parking lot in this area. This works against our aim, incentivizing residents to use on-street parking even when facilities are available at their residence. So one aspect as to why this ordinance increases the price of one zone is related to the strategy's recommendation of a tiered fee structure. And the other aspect is the history of the residential program itself and what the program seeks to achieve. So in the early eighties, due to the impact of visitors to the Capitol campus, parking in the surrounding neighborhoods, the city stood up a program to exempt residents and their visitors from the timed parking areas in the South Capitol Neighborhood. Over that decade, the program was refined and some other areas were added, including downtown. And the annual permit fee was added to pay for the administration of the program. So fast forward to 2019 and not only had that fee remained unchanged, but downtown was changing. The downtown strategy was adopted and new mixed use buildings were built with even more to come. With the adoption of the parking strategy that year, staff prepared to make a recommendation to increase fees to all zones throughout the system from $10 to $60 per year. This recommendation was flagged by members of, of the South Capitol Neighborhood, or I should say residents of the South Capitol Neighborhood, who identified a limitation of the strategy's recommendation from, from the slide before, that the fee should be consistent with daily and hourly rates to encourage the use of off-street parking. They pointed out that A, many of the historic homes in that area simply do not have off-street parking options and B, there aren't commercially available parking facilities to encourage them toward. For these residents, the program was meant as a means to prevent spillover from the Capitol and to preserve the neighborhood character. It's in this way that our residential parking program serves two distinct purposes. For non-commercial neighborhoods, we mitigate spillover. Whereas for mixed use areas like our commercial center, it aims to provide parking for residents without onsite parking. But in the latter case, pricing these permits so low leaves available off-street parking underutilized. Exactly what our parking strategy guides us against. So staff thus amended the recommendations to apply only to the residential zones within the downtown planning boundary, which are zones four, five, seven and eight. The fees for which were increased in 2020. In the meantime, they worked with representatives from both the neighborhood, along with the Department of Enterprise Services to develop a strategy specific to that area. Recommendations for which were adopted by council in 2021, along with fee increases to zones one, two, three, which are the South Capitol Neighborhood and six, which is the neighborhood east of Plum Street. Along with these increases came a 50% discount for qualifying low income residents and staff implemented a monthly payment option to lessen the burden of a lump sum annual payment. So for those of you still wondering what I mean by zone seven, an image of it is on the screen. It's the brown catcher's mitt shape roughly bounded by the farmer's market to the north, Eighth Avenue to the south, the bridges to the west and Plum Street to the east. This area encompasses our commercial and entertainment center, our walkable waterfront and transit hub. The increase for this zone from $5 to $10 per month is the next step in closing the gap between this fee and the cost of commercially available off-street parking. Prioritizing on-street parking for downtown visitors, shorter term needs. Tonight, we ask council to move to approve the ordinance amending Olympia Municipal Code Chapter 4 dot seven related to residential parking on first reading and forward to second reading. Thank you very much. And I'm open to any questions you have.
Thank you so much, Max. That is great clarification. And I'm glad that we did bring it forward to other businesses this week so that it's just one more touch with our community because it does impact, you know, large part of our downtown. And there's just been a lot of misunderstanding sometimes about our parking strategies. And so this is just one more way to make it more clear and transparent. So I'm going to take some questions. Councilmember Wind, followed by Councilmember Partially.
Hey, Max. Thanks so much. Um, I have a, I have a question. So I appreciate how straightforward your slides were and easy to understand for folks that might be seeing this for the first time. Particularly the last slide that says in parentheses, $5 a month increase, right? So it is nominal to some folks and also occasionally we will get emails from folks that that's a lot, you know, not, maybe not specifically this, but increases that we think, oh, it's just $50 a year. It's just this much a year. But it does impact people differently in our city. And so my understanding is the city will work with folks. Is that correct? So could you talk a little bit about for folks where $5 increase a month is a lot? So how is that transition going to look?
Sure. So we already have implemented a 50, like I said, a 50% discount for, for folks who qualify in with other programs as low income. So really all they have to do is come to the front counter, show that, that, that validation that they're in some other program that's, you know, means tested and the front counter will then, you know, assign them the status of qualifying for that 50% discount. So that was really critical for staff because, you know, as we saw, if keeping up with the strategy's recommendation of a sort of tiered, you know, ratcheting up of the pricing for downtown residents. That we wanted to have options for people who qualified as low discount so that they weren't hit quite as hard. The other option, you know, the other piece to that is, is incorporating a monthly payment option. Previously it was just, you know, once a year. That was the fee, of course, when it's $10, it's much more affordable than, than the recommendation, recommendation in the strategy, which is actually 240 dollars per year. So having that monthly payment option is, is I think going to be easier for people to, to manage. So, so the recommendation here for the change is to $10 per month. So it'll be less impactful, we hope for the, the public.
Thanks. I appreciate it.
All right. I got Councilmember Partially followed by Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you for that question. That's sort of where I was going with this. Is it possible to have on the Facebook? When we, or after the vote, if this passes, information on that, what qualifies for the 50%? How do you have to qualify? What, what do you need in your, to come up to the front desk to prove that you need the 50% discount? Because otherwise they have to show up at city hall or where can they find it on our website? Just so people can do that before they show up. So if we could do that on a Facebook post, because there is some concern with those, this actually is substantial. That'd be fantastic.
Thank you for that.
Yeah. And I had forgotten about that until I read the packet and I appreciate that.
All right. You've got Mayor Pro Tim Gilman, followed by Councilmember Cooper.
So I'm, I'm less concerned about whether it's five or $10 a month. I think if you own a vehicle and you put gas in it and you have insurance on it. But that's a, it's not a significant part of the cost of owning and operating a vehicle. So I, I, I'm not sure that it either serves as a deterrent or that it, or that it would be a hardship for folks who have a vehicle. And I'm still trying to understand, I, I believe the ordinance says that they could park indefinitely in a nine hour meter. That you could leave your camper van there for 50 weeks out of the year and then take a camping for two weeks out of the year, if you live in a downtown apartment. So I, I'm just trying to reconcile this with our, our, our move to limit the requirements for developers to provide parking. And then you were saying this would be parking for residents without onsite. Why would we provide long-term parking if we're simultaneously not requiring long-term parking? I, I don't understand.
So a couple of things, you know, one, there's a caveat that you simply can't leave your vehicle parked. Maybe I, I Maybe I I I think I was a little bit vague, uh leave your parked, car parked in one space indefinitely. We do still have rules that cars do need to be moved, but you could, as a downtown resident, park it in at a nine-hour meter and then move it every few days um without paying the meter. So just pay by paying the residential permit uh fee. I do also believe that there's uh limitations in terms of car type. You're not allowed to have trailers in the program, for example. Um, but I think to your your larger question about, you know, um uh, you know, reducing parking minimums for developers or 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 allowing, you know, allowing a building to be built without parking, um by increasing the the price for parking, for residential parking on-street through this program to match the market rate for commercially available parking lots, then we really reflect the true cost of parking um rather than kind of create a back door for people to park on-street where we're actually encouraging uh shorter-term uses for for visitors downtown. So so this is by 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 increasing this cost, we're hoping to get people moved appropriately into off-street lots. And then, you know, maybe there's a viable market there for for, you know, building parking um or or, you know, managing more parking lots, because that is going to actually reflect the true demand of parking.
Thank you, Max. And just so for, because I'm trying to understand this true cost at ten dollars a month. Do you know how much revenue we get from one parking stall at the three-hour meters along our our main drags?
Oh, that's a a question I would hate to just guess, so.
I would guess that's the true cost of the true value of that parking stall is the revenue it generates, you know, in a month at those dollar fifties at a time. So I'm just.
I'd be happy to to run a report and follow up with an average on a three-year.
Just I'm just, how do you get a number so low as ten dollars? Is that sort of what you think the market will bear? What? Because it's it's clearly on an order of magnitude lower than what we get out of our short-term meters that we're trying to turn over. So where does the ten dollars come from?
It's well, it's related to the the history of the program, really. I mean, and 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 I think it's an important point to show that the program serves two needs. On the one hand, it's, you know, simply to keep a residential character in a neighborhood. On the other hand, it's um to provide the parking in a down, in a growing downtown. But because the fee structure was was uh, you know, was one, you know, one fee uh serving two purposes, I think that that's how we ended up with a ten, you know, ten dollars per year. And so to 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 re-orient or realign, we need to, I, you know, we, staff is recommending approaching a number uh closer to market rate, but over time, over some years with incremental increases.
Thank you. Thank you for your work, Max.
Thank you.
All right. Next, I have Councilmember Cooper and circling back to Councilmember Partially.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. Max, when you were talking about the program for folks who have um lower income, you, a thought came to me, and as I was, I've thought about this before, and I've just never asked the question. Is it possible to use our utility billing system to do these permits? So like you can go in and do things and change your payment all it it through the web portal and not have to come to the front counter? That when you said the means test, it made me think, you know, there's a stigma associated with proving that bill to a human being versus if you could do it, you know, all through the website with your license and registration all at the same time. And it feels like our utility billing system has a lot of those capabilities. And I'm just wondering, is that something we've thought about?
So one thing that we want to do is.
So I was gonna say with my own interactions with permits, it like you have to come down here, you have to provide paper forms, and it feels like it's not as modern of a system as some of our other ones.
Yes. Uh, one thing that we uh want to do from the outset is is to not build a a whole new means test process. So so that with the utility uh bill, that would be another, you know, if 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 a customer said, look, I qualify for this, they, all they would need to do is to show us that they qualify for that, rather than having to go through, you know, income statements and so forth. Um, whether or not they can do that through email, I believe they can, but I would be happy to follow up um with you.
Yeah, and.
Or via the portal, I should say, because we do have a portal, you know, application process for this, for these.
Separately, dude.
That's right.
Okay. Yeah, and I and in my mind, if especially during COVID, people means tested for utility billing and they ask for a permit for the same address, should it be automatic? Like, do we already know that information about certain people at certain addresses without having to prove? Just just kind of thinking out loud.
All right. Councilmember Partially.
Well, Councilmember Cooper, you were reading my mind on that one. That's where I wanted to go. Um, because, you know, if I think about the average person, especially if this is a means test, they may be working during our hours when our front desk is open. So I had that concern as well. Um, so I'll just leave this with a comment that I would love to see um married at some point. We had the Olympia Beyond come and show statistics for Olympia um this summer, I think. And one of the uh statistics was the people's impression of the ease of parking downtown was significantly different than what I've heard from uh what our own community thinks. I mean, significantly different. And how do we marry that? Because most people in their study said parking downtown was easy. So I would love to see a conversation that marries those two.
And then I have one final question related to South Cap. Uh, full disclosure, I live in that neighborhood, and ten dollars a year for your car to be on the street, and it hasn't changed since nineteen eighty-nine.
It actually did. It did change in twenty, for the twenty twenty-two year to twenty-five dollars per vehicle for the first two and to thirty-five for the third.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That was the result of, that was one of the results of the work that we did with the group. I'm sorry if I didn't make that call.
Okay, okay, because I, yeah, I haven't had a car registered, so it hasn't, last time I did, it was ten dollars for my daughter when she lived with us. So um it still seems like a screaming deal. And was that um based on the true cost of enforcement for the neighborhood? Because I know during session especially, there's somebody on our street two or three times a day.
Well, that was a a a somewhat lengthy process that the staff went through with the um representatives from the neighborhood. Uh, it was an interest-based negotiation that was mediated, and um the number that we came to was the twenty-five for the first two and for uh for thirty-five for the third. So it's difficult to reflect the true cost of enforcement. Um, you know, our officers, our representatives are in lots of different areas. Uh, we tried a couple of different directions in terms of accounting for the cost. Um, but we ended up happy to be, to have concluded the process and came with that recommendation. One of the notes um is that from that process came the recommendation for the fifty percent discount. Um, so that's, you know, we we have that process to thank in large part um uh by bringing that forward.
Okay. Thanks. It's, that helps. I understand that. Uh, Councilmember Payne.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Max, for the presentation. I I just have a question here. Um, I see in the the draft of the parking uh strategy um that there is a uh recommendation to implement a downtown employee parking education program. Um, and that just got me thinking about um residential education. And how exactly are we communicating to uh impacted residents of these changes?
So staff did uh attempt to reach out to the Downtown Neighborhood Association, and unfortunately, we were unable to connect. But there are, you know, additional items in the strategy that we are uh especially moving more towards as we continue to emerge out of COVID. We have um some agenda items for the coming year, and we do hope to work with the Neighborhood Association quite closely about those changes.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, Councilmember Wynn.
Hey, Max, just a thought. Um, I live in the downtown area. I don't ever hear from the Downtown Neighborhood Association. I'm sure they're nice folks. Um, but what I do get all the time is a five things to know um from the city of Olympia. So uh what about just mailing folks?
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah. And then if we have a portal for uh folks that use a portal, um then, you know, is there a place for messages on there that people can get, you know, multiple touches for folks? So we have something to point to um and say, well, actually, you know, that this is where you can find it. And and then, you know, hopefully get people used to uh uh communications about about changes or any sort of updates from the city. Yeah, I I um don't uh for, yeah, for me, just I wouldn't to be honest, I I wouldn't really know, other than being on the city council and getting some sort of touch point with the Neighborhood Association. I wouldn't really know that there was a Neighborhood Association or how to even contact those people, you know, it's just, yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
All right. I think we're done. Uh, Councilmember, sorry, City Manager Bernie.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. One of the things I might recommend uh around the parking strategy is, as Max uh mentioned, you know, it was adopted by council in twenty nineteen. Next year, it's five years old, and so it might be a good opportunity next year to have Max come back to council and just give a more general overview of the strategy, where we've been, where we're going, what's still left to do. Um, I think that this, a long time has passed. I think we're due for just a more general update to the council, if you'd like to do that.
Remember some of those meetings back in two thousand and eighteen. Yep. All right. Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Gilman.
There's no more discussion. I'd love to make a motion. I move to approve the ordinance amending Olympia Municipal Code, Chapter four point seven zero, related to residential parking on first reading and forward to second reading.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Have a good evening. Uh, last, we have uh item six C, which is the Council of Neighborhoods Association Memorandum of Understanding Discussion. So this is a discussion about the CNA's MOU.
Yes, good evening. Uh, Mayor and City Council, Tim Smith. Um, I'm Deputy Director of Community Planning and Development, and I'm here tonight, as the mayor said, to give an update on the memorandum of understanding uh development between the city and the Council of Neighborhoods. Uh, we've been in a year-long process to update this, we'll call it the MOU for short. And so again, tonight, we're here to give you a briefing on where we are with that and to and to get some feedback from you. Um, I will also note that uh a couple of CNA representatives, I believe, are in attendance um online. One is Larry Jezza, the 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 uh the Chair of the CNA, as well as Melissa Allen. Um, Larry did intend to provide some comment during the public comment period, but for a reason uh didn't do that. And so just to let you know, he does have prepared comments if you choose to call him during this, during this discussion. And so again, tonight is just to give you an update on on where we are in this process. So just a little background information first about uh neighborhoods and um and how how the program works within the city. Um, Olympia actually has a codified process for recognizing as well as working with neighborhoods. Uh, that's in Chapter eighteen eighty-six of the OMC, and currently there are thirty-two registered associations uh across the city. Uh, the municipal code states that neighborhoods will actively participate in city decision-making processes, and then the overall objective is to improve public involvement in city affairs. So a little bit on the memorandum of understanding, to to look at that, you have to go back to twenty twelve, because that was the first MOU between the city uh and the, what was called the Coalition of Neighborhoods at that time. And the the OMOU recognizes the CNA at that time as an entity that can provide assistance to the city and individual registered neighborhood associations. And so the MOU clarifies how the city and the CNA would collaborate on citywide issues through discussion and dialogue. And this involves the facilitation and exchange of views, increase public awareness and respond to public concerns. And so that was pretty much the the background of the MOU. And so the first one that was adopted was a three-year uh memorandum of understanding. In twenty fifteen, uh, there was an update to the MOU uh with very little change uh in in language. It was just pretty much an update. Same thing happened in twenty eighteen. At that time, the Coalition of Neighborhoods changed its name to the Council of Neighborhood Associations. And so that was for three more years. And then in twenty twenty-one, there was another update. At that time, a work group was formed uh with city staff, uh CNA representatives and a council member to to have a little more detailed discussion on an update. And over the course of the year, it was decided that more time was needed uh to facilitate a larger update discussion. And so what, at that time, staff brought forward to the council, and the council approved a one-year extension of the of the MOU uh in December of twenty twenty-one. Then in twenty twenty-two, uh, the city hired a consultant, Jay Robertson and Associates, to facilitate a work group uh to develop an updated memorandum of of understanding. Um, and at that time, the work group was formed. It consisted of um Dante Payne, Councilmember Dante Payne, as well as Mayor Pro Tim Gilman, uh city staff, and then the senior representatives Larry Jezza and Melissa Allen. So the framework uh for for the discussion was really based on the outcomes from the twenty twenty-one discussion. Those were uh to cover several topics, including the annual CNA work program, to talk about a communications plan, discuss registered neighborhood association representation and engagement, uh to talk about CNA representation. And so that was the framework. And again, the the work group met uh twice over the course of the year and prepared the draft that is in front of you tonight. So now I'll go through some of the key changes to the MOU, and there's just a handful. And so we'll just go through them uh fairly quickly here and then and then be ready for any questions you might have. Um, the first one is the section two within the MOU, which is ensuring the achievement of improved public involvement in city affairs. And with that, the MOU now emphasizes in the draft the importance of involving hard-to-reach and or underserved community members. And the MOU defines that as generally individuals that have higher barriers to participation, such as renters, working families and lower-income individuals. The MOU also addresses a CNA city partnership on actions to achieve th- those engagement opportunities. A lot of the, certain expressed by senior representatives that they have the desire to reach out, but they don't have the tools or the data. And so um, for example, we we talked a lot about programs such as the potential rental assistance pro- rental registration program the council is considering would provide information to the CNA so they could reach out better to renters. Another is GIS data. The city is migrating to a new GIS platform that will ultimately allow for data sharing to occur where the CNA can use that to help achieve the goals of better representation in their neighborhoods. So some other changes included section three, and this is in the CNA Involvement in City Decision-Making Processes. The MOU really emphasized this time the the uh the idea of a quarterly forum framework for addressing regional, citywide and neighborhood issues. Some of the concern that 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 staff and and other state representatives had was that the monthly meetings were becoming quite taxing on staff time as as issues were brought forward in a fairly rushed matter with little time to prepare. And so the effort was made through this MOU to define a quarterly forum that would occur three to four times a year where agendas would be, agendas would be built, um and then staff would have time to prepare and then have conversations on regional issues of importance. And so with that, the monthly meeting would then be more for the purpose of doing regular business updates uh of city business, where we'd have a staff liaison as well as a potential council member to talk about updates on what's going on in the city affairs and answer questions, but you wouldn't have those large dialogues you'd have at the quarterly meetings that would occur uh just three to four times, times a year. Also, the 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 agenda or the work plan for the city and CNA would be informed by the city council annual work plan. So there'd be some consistency between the conversations between between the two bodies. And then lastly, the the changes are sections four and five, which deal with city decision related to the planning processes. And the the current MOU, that's the twenty twenty-one version and prior versions, is really vague on making a distinction between long-range planning and current planning. And there's different processes for public engagement and and the review and approval process. For example, long-range planning typically goes through the planning commission uh to the city council through a legislative process, whereas permit review processes is more of a staff-driven or staff review or hearing examiner decision. And so there's key points for decision-making processes. And so this MOU clarifies opportunities for input in each different process. Then lastly, the it clarifies that when we do have neighborhood meetings, especially associated with development review project, the city would host those meetings instead of the CNA. The concern staff had is that those are public-wide, city-wide meetings, and the city would be the best venue to provide the host for those conversations. So with that, that's that's a fairly quick rundown. Um, as I said at the beginning, this is really a check-in with the full council. It's the first time the full council's had a chance to have a conversation on this MOU since we've started the update process. And so we look forward to hearing your feedback this evening.
All right. Thanks. Uh, top of the order. Thanks to Tim and also to the council members um that have uh attended these meetings. I know Councilmember Wynn's attended a lot of them, but specifically Councilmember Payne and Mayor Pro Tim Gilman for representing council and on the revisions to this MOU. Any questions? Uh, Councilmember Cooper, followed by Councilmember Partially.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. A couple of questions. Tim, what's, what percentage of the population is covered by registered neighborhood association?
Don't know offhand, but we could run that. We 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 do have a GIS layer showing the neighborhoods, so we could, we could give you that information.
But it's not the whole city.
It's not the whole city. There's, there's coverage areas and there's coverage gaps. For example, a lot of South Olympia is not within a registered neighborhood association. Um, but we can provide you a map and some information on that.
Yeah, I'd be curious. I don't, I don't think it's going to influence my opinion tonight, but I'd be really curious to know. Um, so the other piece for me is just in the, in the original MOU, it talks about um that we'll review it periodically to uh to see if we're achieving the objective of improved public involvement in city affairs. Do we have any outcomes assessment of that since two thousand? Do we have any outcomes assessment of that since two thousand and twelve?
Not to my knowledge.
Has that question been asked?
Well, during, I guess during the update of the MOU, the conversation was, um, how do, how do we better frame the conversation with the hard-to-reach and underserved communities? But, um, having not been involved in prior updates, I can't answer that question.
So we have a ten-year agreement to have, to try to get a higher level of public involvement, but we don't know if that's happened or not from the city, cities perspective.
No, we don't know that for a fact. I mean, we, we do know that, I mean, anecdotally, efforts have been made through the CNA and the Registered Neighborhood Associations to get, to get the word out on projects. We do that with both current planning as well as long-range planning projects. We use them as a, as a, as a resource and a starting point to, to get information out. City staff will send me a lot of times announcements that I then send off to the CNA, then they send it out to their, their organization. And so that is one method that's ongoing.
Appreciate that. Is there any attempt in this process to reach out to the little N neighborhoods, like the people who live in the neighborhood, to ask them to, how they think the city and the CNA should interact?
Um, that would, no, that was not, that was not a part of this process. We, we asked the, the CNA for representatives to participate and, and those that stepped forward did.
Okay. And, and then my last question is, um, in this process, was there any attempt to look at what other models might exist for how to engage all of the neighborhoods across the city throughout the year?
Models in, is in other cities?
Places other than what we're doing.
We have not, no, we have not done that.
Okay. So that wasn't part of the, the facilitation? It was just about updating the MOU?
Right, it was about, right, it was about, facilitator was about bringing, bringing it together, the group, and moving through on to consensus.
Okay, thank you. That concludes my questions for now.
Thank you. Councilmember Partially followed by Councilmember Madron.
That was a good series of questions, uh, Councilmember Cooper. Kind of, kind of summarizing some of my questions, because I do believe in, in the representation and of, um, any portion of our community in our policies, like, um, PBIA, for example, uh, PRAC, Arts and Culture. So I, this is an important group. I think, um, I'd like to know the information on, on Jim's, uh, to see if we've actually had an impact in the last ten to twelve years on this. That, that would be interesting. I'd also would love to know, and I kind of had this conversation at agenda setting. I understand that there's a lot of work to be done here, but, um, I think we're at fifty-three, fifty-four percent of our population are renters, and a lot of them live in these neighborhoods. I'd like to see the CNA, um, take the data that we can give them potentially and kind of come up with a plan and present it to council on how they're gonna try to do this engagement. Because I think they're impacted as much, um, by the city or more. And this could be a mechanism also to, another way to get information to them. So I just, I'm, I'm applauding the effort. I'm applauding both sides, the CNA and the city, for coming together and obviously getting a good compromise in a lot of places. But that's that, my one area. I just would like to see the CNA use our information and develop a plan.
All right, Councilmember Madron.
Yeah, um, I've got a few things. Um, for one, the MOU mentions the review of not just the MOU, but the OMC, uh, eighteen eighty-six. When's the last time that OMC has been reviewed?
I don't know, but we could easily find out. If I could pull up the OMC right now, it would have it on there.
Yeah.
On the bottom, so I can look that up. It's been a while, and I can say that it, in review of it recently, it, it does need some updating, particularly regarding permit review.
Well, and you know, to get to some of the points around like outreach, like how much more outreach, one of the things I read in it is that, um, recognized neighborhood associations shall, shall annually submit a letter to the city, um, around the number of dues-paying members, or if they don't have dues-paying members, um, how, um, you know, how, how they count their membership and what that number is. Um, there's also language in here around like, you know, if they exclude, uh, renters, then their explanation for that. And I think that part is probably out to date, out of date right there. But do, do we get, um, updates annually from neighborhood associations on their membership?
Yes, we do. There's a Registered Neighborhood Association process update that Liddy Morhead Associate Planner, um, oversees every year, where we're updating that information.
Okay. I, I'd be curious to learn more about, um, you know, what a neighborhood association sees as a member, uh, for them. Because you know, as Councilmember Lynn was saying, you know, she's got a neighborhood association for downtown, but you don't, you wouldn't know how to get in touch with them. But, um, like, who, who are the people who are, and I, I say that because I have the same experience. I mean, I know how to get in touch with them, but I don't, I'm not plugged into the, you know, the regular business of my neighborhood association. So like, who's, who's a member? Um, and what, what's the process for becoming a member? Those, those are just things I'm curious about. Um, I also, I see in here, it says the city will collaborate with the CNAs and RNAs in, uh, the efforts to reach underserved community members. And it's good to hear you talk about that in terms of data sharing. I'm curious, I'm concerned. Um, this MOU, the draft one, doesn't have the word equity in it. Um, and I see that there's, there's some like statements in there that, you know, belong under an equity framework, but we've done so much at the city of Olympia to make sure that we are hearing from diverse members of the community. We are doing a lot of our own internal work. You know, all our staff reports have an equity analysis. What's the commitment from the CNA around equity work? And you know, is, is it just about data sharing that they're asking for? Or, you know, I, I'd be, I would want to know that they're also, uh, doing some work around, uh, how they approach equity, uh, how they intend to, you know, bring more people into the fold with their organizations. So I don't know if you have any, I, I didn't exactly have a question in there, but I'll pause for a moment if you had something you wanted to say.
No, that's certainly something that, you know, it's, appreciate that comment. The word, the, the equity is not really addressed in here specifically. And it's something we can have conversations with the CNA to, to fold into this.
Yeah. And I'll just, I'll just note that, you know, the, the word collaborate appears there and many other ways throughout. Um, it's not clear to me in any of those instances, like what, what that means, what's gonna be expected of us as a city, what kind of, um, expectation on our resources and staff. And so there's, there's just quite a few places that I think are, are just vague in that way. And I think it sets up folks for disappointment, uh, when, when somebody interprets it one way, somebody interprets it another, or you know, maybe resources are scarce at, during certain times. So I think, I think there's some work to be done to, to clarify some of that. Um, and I also see, um, you know, something about a set of guiding principles. Um, and I'm curious, uh, you know, what is some of the conversation around that is, you know, can we, can we, can we say more about how those principles are gonna be established? Is the city gonna fi- hire another facilitator? You know, to create guiding principles? Um, you having any insight on that?
Yeah, I'm trying to find that within the.
Oh, it is section A three. So just on the second page of what I got, which is the track changes.
Oh, I see. Yeah, this is, this is specific to the, the four, quarterly forum discussions where in, and now the expectation is that the conversation's gonna be respectful, um, you know, during the engagement process. So, no, we have, we did not advance that conversation beyond the fact, we just wanted guiding principles to create the framework for courteous discussion during potentially challenging issues. So.
Well, and so in this forums part, um, one of the things that I think of is like, we recently held a community forum here, right, right here in City Hall around Percival Canyon. Um, and I thought that was really, really impactful for that neighborhood. I don't know if the neighborhood associations were involved in outreach. They very well could have been. Um, but I just wanted to highlight that as something that we've done really well in terms of a neighborhood forum around a specific interest where people needed information, needed to share their experiences and like, and, and know how to stay connected to the work. So I just wanted to highlight that. Um, I've, I've got a couple of things, but I'll pause for a moment to, to pass it around some.
I know I've got City Manager Jay Bernie that has something. I have another question. Can I do that first, or do you want to go first?
Either way, I was just gonna respond just more on the equity conversation.
Then why don't you go ahead and then I'll have a different question.
Okay. So I just wanted to, to comment on the discussions and certainly, um, Councilmember Mayor Pro Tim can join in on this too. But we had a, we did have a good conversation about how we engage others. And, and some of the feedback from the CNA was that, um, they need help in that. And I, and I think they see this as a partnership. So I do think it's beyond just providing data to them. We have expertise here that we can share in terms of how you engage other communities, how you get others involved. It's something that we've been doing. It's not a piece of expertise that the CNA has, um, at their disposal. So I think I see this as a partnership. I agree that I think we can do some more work around the language in here around equity and maybe be more clear in terms of what that collaboration looks like on both sides. But I just want to highlight that there wasn't disagreement by the CNA that, that they don't feel this work is important. It was really about how to accomplish it and whether or not they have the tools to do it themselves and are really asking for our help to partner with them to do that. So I just wanted to share that context and, of course, if others want to add in, but that's my recollection of those conversations.
Councilmember Madron, because I think it's.
Yeah, ju- just a quick follow-up on that is like, what I don't see in the MOU is the commitment from CNA. You know, when we, for, like, our cultural access program, for example, we ask organizations to have some kind of commitment to equity, you know? We have our own, and I, and, and that, I don't see that in here at all. So, um, that, that, that would be something that would be good to see, good to see. Sorry.
That's a really great catch. Thank you. Councilmember Payne.
Yes, um, just to add into this conversation, thank you for the context, uh, City Manager. Um, you know, I think we sort of left this ambiguous, uh, deliberately in a lot of ways. Uh, because we, to be honest, we didn't know how that, that collaboration would look like. I think there was a, a, a bit of a concern that we're, we're stretched thin already as an organization ourselves and how, uh, you know, we don't, certainly don't want to over-commit, uh, to, to helping the CNA in, in, in that regard in terms of, um, how to approach equity in the work that they do. With that being said, um, I do know that they, they happen to, on occasion, they, they form subcommittees for a variety of different reasons, uh, for different projects and, and things of that nature. So maybe the commitment looks something like forming a subcommittee, uh, within the CNA that will engage with the city, uh, on, on this work, uh, to help them, uh, get the wheels turning.
Thank you.
Just a thought.
Sure, sure. Uh, Tim, I'm gonna go back to the track changes document for a question. Uh, it's in section six, it's, uh, letter B. And it talks about, I just would like some more clarification. As part of the sub-area planning, the city and CNA may work with residents to design neighborhood frameworks that are consistent with the city comprehensive plan and may identify land use types and design styles that fit with existing neighborhoods. Now, I thought a few years ago, we took out neighborhood character out of our comp plan, and this feels. Pardon?
We defined it.
Oh, we defined it?
Yeah.
It's just this bit like a, it, it, it feels again, very pers- like they're, they're wanting to prescribe what can be built or, you know, add it on, or, you know, just, it, it, I, I don't know, it just kind of is, seems like a little tricky area considering what we've been trying to do with, um, our infill and, um, you know, neighborhood framework could be shared with permit applicants to guide new development proposals in that neighborhood. It seems kind of almost coercive. And I just didn't know where that came from and, and whether that was really vetted. Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Gilman.
I just want to add a tiny piece, which is the first phrase of that says, as part of sub-area planning. So, see, in creating the sub-area plans, which do.
That's a.
Yes, that's, that's the beginning of that sentence.
Okay.
And, and our sub-area plans do have those sorts of conversations in them.
Okay, that helps me, because yeah, this was qualified just around sub-area planning when those, okay. So we haven't had one of those done for a while since COVID, but, um, all right, thank you for that clarification. It just kind of triggered me a little bit when I saw that language. Councilmember Wen.
Oh, are you done?
I'm done.
Okay. I really want this to work, and I'm, I'm not sure it has been. Um, and, um, that I'm talking about the relationship with, with the CNA. It's, uh, the meetings I've been at the CNA, they're frustrated. Sometimes they're happy about things that'll happen, but they're, they're, uh, from the feeling in the room, the words that are said, it's, there's a lot of frustration. And then, um, uh, when things are brought, information from the CNA is brought like on a report or something like that, I feel like their thoughts are falling on deaf ears. And so I know there's quite a bit, um, that, uh, of work and conversations. I was in some of the initial meetings, um, for this, uh, CNA MOU, uh, last go-around. And there was a lot of talk about just, hey, how do we get to the table and, uh, and have mutual respect? So I, I think that's worth noting. Um, a- and that's on, again, mutual respect. So, uh, I want to come away from this with something, and I think everyone does, but come away with it with something that is actually, that is work, that will work and is actionable and something where I understand that the CNA is, is different than our advisory groups, but, uh, something, uh, where I know really clearly what we're doing, like what the point of the Arts Commission is, what we're doing with their recommendations, um, and how, and how that feedback loop is happening, right? And when, when they're saying, when they're voting majority yes on something, they're, they're supporting something, or, or when they've, uh, they're not sure about a direction of proposed policy, like, that is very clear to me. The communication loop, uh, between the, the CNA and the city and just back and forth, that is unclear. And, and I've heard also, you know, frustration, um, from, uh, from the, the CNA about, well, how are our thoughts really considered? Like, how are they meaningfully considered, even if you, if the city can't put, you know, every bit of feedback into action? What do we do with that information? And I hear that, like, what do they do with that information? Or what do we do with it, right? And, um, and then also, um, so I, I just, I'm thinking about that. I, I don't want to dismiss all of the work that has come up to this point. Um, I'm, uh, I'm worried we're gonna pass something that doesn't quite have that, as many changes as I've, uh, or, I guess enhancements, um, as, uh, it would take to get us to a place where we're both mutually respecting each other, where we're having something actionable and functional, and where people understand what each other's roles are and we're working together, and we see each other as a value add. So I'm sitting in that. Loved the line of questioning from Councilmember Cooper. I think a lot about, uh, Stacy Ray, who, uh, she's the city staff, for those that don't know. And quite honestly, I can't remember her title because it seems like she's everywhere. Yeah, so, and, uh, the, the point is, is that, uh, she's a city staff member that her, along with, uh, her team of folks, um, have conducted really great, extensive, uh, hard-to-work-on issues like reimagining public safety, starting this work of, um, now, uh, uh, looking at what community involvement in law enforcement might look like, right, for our city. So these are, these are tough issues. Um, and, uh, it is my experience that the CNA and the city relationship has been a tough space. I'm su- I'm sure it's probably wasn't always like that, but it seems like it. And I think, you know, what, you know, what can we do that we don't, you know, we don't throw out all these efforts that have, uh, that have gotten us to this point? But we have a really, uh, you know, we spend some more time on it, right? And, and we get to those questions of what are other places doing, that, what are some standard practices that are working? Um, what is, uh, what does it look like to include? The, the little N was funny to me, but you know, the rest of the neighbors, right? What, what does that look like? I also understand that our, our advisory, uh, advisory groups that we have, we have so many of them. Um, and, you know, those are mostly people that live in Olympia as well, so they're neighbors in their own right. Now, I know Larry and Melissa that are listening in, they, you know, I've heard from the CNA that they don't give the neighborhood perspective. So, um, you know, so I'm hearing that. Um, I don't a hundred percent understand it. Um, but, uh, yeah, so I just, I, yeah, so that's what I'm sitting with tonight. Thanks, and I'd welcome the conversation.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tim Gilman, and just, I want to take a temp check on, there's supposed to be emotion associated with, no emotion, this, okay, great. All right, discuss away.
Good, were that pressure relieved? So I, I think I've had the longest history with CNA. Um, I, I took over from Julie Hankins as she left, and I've had some form of connection over those years since. So a couple of sort of defining things I, I wanted to start with. First, um, to Councilmember Cooper's question about what percentage of the city's covered by recognized neighborhood associations? It's a little fuzzy because they're all voluntary, um, non-staffed organizations. So they, they wax and wane a bit in terms of how robust they are. And the city created an overlay where, like, I live outside of southwest and northwest Olympia, so I'm in the General Westside Neighborhood Association. That, I don't know that anything's ever happened in the General Westside Neighborhood Association in terms of meetings, but by the map, we're all in a neighborhood association. Um, there, but there are different levels of activity. By the map, we're all in a neighborhood association. Um, there, but there are different levels of activity. Um, the the council of neighborhood associations is not, I don't see it as an entity of its own. But it is an organization that doesn't have staff, doesn't doesn't have funding. But is is made up of a representative of each recognized neighborhood association. That chooses to send somebody in to do these discussion forums. So when we're asking for more work. We're really asking the recognized neighborhood associations, what are you doing to reach more of the residents in your area? What are you doing to make membership more accessible? Whatever those those questions are about both equity and engagement. Um, I think the CNA can be our conduit, but you also have to recognize that. Both the CNA and the recognized neighborhood associations are city constructs in our municipal code. And they've been staffed by a person in our planning department uh, from the beginning. Um, and so they they were something we created. It's not, it's not that a. A random group of people came and knocked on our doors. And then. My experience, I've had three different chairs I've worked with. And I would say that across these last, whatever it's been, six or seven years, there's been a rotating cast of representatives. From the different neighborhood associations. And I think that the experience you have, if you're not at the meetings. Is that some of the same people who testify at every public hearing we have. Um, also attend those CNA meetings, and that colors a perspective that that is the CNA. And um, I I would suggest that the, I think the meetings are um, more diverse in the conversation. The people are changing more at the table there. Um, then you see from the. The few people who come and regularly make public comment. So um, if the con- if the concern is frustration over the people who regularly make public comment. I I don't know that um, that this is a way to to a to address that. Um, but if the concern is genuinely about trying to get more people involved in giving input to the city. Through a bottom up neighborhood structure, then I think that's on us through the work that Lydia has ably done. And it could certainly use more resources.
Yeah. Sure.
All yield.
Councilmember Wen.
Um, Mayor Pro Tim, thanks for saying that. Um. There's a lot, there's things that I appreciate about the CNA as well and and this relationship, right? I think that it ca- the the intent is really good. Um, and uh, and I and I appreciate you calling out about, yeah, there's, you know, frustration about when you you sit up here and then. You have the same people come in and and then, and public comment, people usually come to public comment if there's something that they want. Uh, uh, adjusted, right? It's not you, it's not usually for for gratitude, but sometimes we get that. And that's all right. And that doesn't really bother me. And there are some people that come all the time and and say mostly negative things that I would love to party with. You know, I'm, it, that is not a concern. Um, and so, and yeah, and and I echo it that I also. Do not want us to, I I would hate uh, for for us to use some, like throw out an entire tool. It being the the CNA and what that relationship could be because of frustration, right? Um, eh, I also recognize that, as you had said, all of the members of the CNA don't have to do it. You know, there are there are people that genuinely care, they have different passion points, you know, different parts where uh, you know, their 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 values align. And and their politics, whatever. Um, and they come together and uh, and they're. You know, they could be doing anything else, but they come together because they care about Olympia. And um, and they try their best to to get information from uh, staff that present and and share it out with people. Uh, they try to put their input in and hopefully it'll, something'll, something'll happen and uh, and it'll uh. You know, im- impact uh, how decisions are made. I get that. I do not want us to uh. To lose that connection. I'm just, I'm just not sure if this uh. Is as as written currently, uh, does enough to strengthen it. I want it to be stronger. And I also, I I get that we are uh, you know, that resources aren't completely uh. You know, they're not fully free flowing, although I do come from a place of abundance. And it's easy uh, to be uh, on council, a council member and be very uh, um. Ambitious, like, yeah, of course, we're doing climate justice yesterday, we're doing this, this and that. I get it. And we have resource constraints. Um, when it comes to the equity, the piece of it or getting the outreach, getting more people to the table, of course, we need to support them. Like, we have folks, they're they're created to be a support to us, right? To have some sort of relationship back and forth. And we have the in-house DEI folks that we tried so hard to get and now we have them. We have different processes with, on different topics with community members that I think are kind of tried and true, means tested. That was, that was a phrase tonight, you know, and I think Stacy and and uh, you know, the staff member I keep on talking about. Um, has means tested things for us, and I think we should do that. I just. I I think it's sometimes it's hard to talk about the awkward things and how and how we, you know, and how we sometimes feel disrespected. And frustrated um, as well. Um, and so I just, uh, I don't know, for what it's worth, uh, I also think that we should. Uh, I don't want to completely dissolve the relationship. I just want us to have an honest conversation, that's all.
Let me see, I think I have, I think I have council member partially.
Yes, I just, um. I want to respect the people's time. Uh, the most frustrating thing when you serve on a committee is is not to get anything done and not feel like you're heard. Absolutely agree with you, council member Wen. So it goes back to council member Cooper's um, questions, which are, you know, do. Does the CNA feel like they've had an impact on the city? And the city feel like they've been able to disseminate communication because. The role, and to go to council member Wen, the role of the CNA, I think we need to have those questions answered. To know if this is going to be effective because it maybe it is a little too vague. What is the role of that? Uh, that group and I want to make sure that if a uh, community member is sitting on the CNA. Or in a neighborhood association knows they have an avenue that's effective to get to city policy. And the work we're doing and development and impacting that and having an access to that. Um, I agree with council member Wen, I don't want to lose this connection. It's an important one. It's it's like all of our others, but. I worry about the definition. And to go to, to give credit to the mayor. At agenda setting, she did suggest that in terms of ability to get to the underserved portions, the. The equity piece, we do have a social justice and equity commission that could help with that. So we have resources, just like council member Wen said, that we could borrow that aren't necessarily all staff time. Um, I just, I'm wanting to make sure that the role of the CNA is honored in any MOU so that it's both sides. Feel that it's useful. So that kind of goes to my left and the two people.
Right, council member Cooper.
I don't have any notes, so I'm gonna make sure I go a little bit.
You're just gonna solve all these problems.
I'm gonna try, yeah. I'm gonna try really hard, mayor, but um. I'm struggling with this because I think to the points that have been made, I don't want to throw out the investment in the relationship. Because that's a resource that the city has expended that I still want gain on. I believe that all of the people at the table to the mayor pro Tim's point are here for Olympia. Like, we all want it to be better. And even the people that we hear from the most. Are often the people I learn from the most, right? Like, the experiences and the level of um. Investigation that they're doing a- about what the city's doing is always helpful. Like, we almost always make shifts based on. Community input. What I don't, I mean, so I was for, I was frustrated with this from the beginning because what I saw was. A a CNA president get elected to the city council and then we had an MOU. We didn't have a lot of discussion about that. Uh, we didn't really have a big process for how to come up with, like, what are the outcomes? What like, what is the CNA bring to the table and what does the city bring to the table? And I think that, you know, for me. We can keep working on this, but I don't believe that we will ever get to the point that we are all asking for, which is. A higher level of community engagement with our neighbors. And if that's the goal, let's make that the real goal and let's roll up our sleeves with the CNA and the neighborhood associations to figure that out. Because right now I feel like we have a invested heavily in a, in a, in a business association relationship. That while the CNA doesn't have structure and staff, it's really what it is. It's representing a bunch of other organizations. Who are all represented by the same type of people, which is a very narrow slice of their neighborhood. My neighborhood has no neighborhood association and I don't know if I'm in a city designed overlay. We've tried and we've talked about it. And um, you know, in my neighborhood, a lot of the the nor- the, I would, I would say the 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 folks who you might see running a. A neighborhood association are running the PTA because we have the school right there. And. You know, so that's, 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 that's part of the the dynamic. But I would really appreciate it if we could step back from this and look at what does the city want to get because. Every single time we do community engagement, in my experience, we get more voice than I'm seeing from this relationship. And I want more voice. And that's to me, like, every single time that we've talked about a budget or a. A plan, it's been about how do we bring more voices to the table? How do we hear from the people we're not hearing from? Because that's what will change. And help us move, move in in the proper direction for for our community. So I could go on and on. But I think for me right now, I'd like to see kind of what staff can do to massage based on this conversation to get. Something that will last us a year. That will give us the opportunity to to actually step back and think about what resources will be involved to design and get what we want. From from the the neighborhood to city conversation. I don't believe this is it. I don't believe that the construct of neighborhood association can ever deliver that. Um, and so I'm a pretty hard no on this, but because of the of the work and I respect the work that's gone into it. I can support it for one year if it can be modified based a little bit on the conversation we're having today. And even if not, I don't, I don't really feel like it's materially that different, to be totally honest.
Councilmember Payne, followed by councilmember Madron.
Yes, uh, thank you for those comments, council member Cooper. Um, I. You know, there, a few times tonight, there's been um, a few council members that have, uh, you know, sort of. Asked the, you know, rhetorical question about how impactful the CNA is and whether or not we we hear their voice i- in the walls of city hall. Um, I would love to know how many times we've said the word sidewalks from the dais or anytime. Um, in the year twenty twenty-three, I I would argue that the CNA has been very impactful in that regard. Um, and they are in part responsible for for why we have uh, prioritized this uh, for next year. Um, so I I would say that, yes, they are. And obviously, at times, they are, they feel like they're not being heard. I could think of at least one or two times that uh, this body has voted uh, in opposite of one of our advisory boards or commissions. Uh, and so we don't always necessarily uh, get everything that we want as anybody. Um, but um, nevertheless, I do think the CNA has has a purpose and and certainly is impactful. Um, I want to try to summarize a a little bit of what I think I heard. Um, I'll just be completely honest and and when we went through this MOU and and we started, I think our approach. Was that we took the existing MOU. And we started uh, from there, looked at that and we started making amendments or changes and adding additions and and things of that nature. When really what I heard here tonight was really informative about our our approach and what we need to do going forward from here. So I think maybe we got, in a lot of ways, we got a little ahead of ourselves. And then attempt to update this MOU when we need to sort of slow down to speed up. Um, so one of the things I heard was, uh, go back to the code. Um, what does the code say? Um, what are we doing to develop it in outreach plan to engage renters? And have we engaged uh, the little ends or neighbors um, in the city? Um, with that being said, I think that that is uh, that's exactly what needs to happen. Um, uh, before we are amending language and and doing all of these things, uh, of course now. Uh, you know, the light bulb is sort sort of going off as as we're having this discussion. Um, you know, and what does collaboration mean? Uh, council member Madron, you asked that earlier. I think that's a a great point. Uh, is that we should be very descriptive about what we mean in each section whenever we are mentioning that word. Uh, so that there is an understanding of who is going to do what and who's responsible for what. Um, and and obviously, we heard a bit about data sharing and and things of that nature. Um, but I think we need to sort of go back to the beginning. Um, and and then hopefully, uh, we'll end up with a better product um, towards the end. Um, I I'm not, you you know, I I. I hear like, oh, you know, I don't know if I could vote for this or anything like that. I, the, obviously, the intent was not for us to do that tonight. And obviously, uh, I'm a no on this as it exists now because it's in draft form and. I knew that it was important to have this discussion, um, because the CNA has had that opportunity to do that and we needed to do that. Um, and so uh, I think we are certainly going to end up with a better product as a result of this discussion. So thank you all for your input.
All right, council member Cooper. Oh, I'm sorry, councilor Madron followed by council member Cooper.
Yeah, I just want to uh, jump in there. Um. You know, I've got a lot of like my own comments throughout this document, but I'm I'm just gonna bring up one more of those and then share some of my overall reflections. Um. I'm concerned about, you know, there's this sentence in here, focus on pedestrian oriented street skapes, sidewalk and trail system improvements. Um, and I'm concerned about that, what what that means in relation to our transportation master plan. Where we have something that helps guide our investments. Um, I know we're doing things like looking into sidewalk policy where we should be doing some. Outreach and engagement and CNA has offered um, to support that, but I I do think that that's something that. That needs to go broader. And you know, I look at the part of this that's about city services, neighborhood services and like how, you know, we'll work with neighborhood associations on improving. City services, I extend that to infrastructure. What about the places that aren't represented? Are they going to get left behind in our investments in multimodal transportation? Or parks or whatever, because they don't have somebody there to be a squeaky wheel. I'm talking about places that don't have established. Neighborhood associations or they don't have active ones or they don't know if they have one or not, like. Um, so that, that's one of my biggest concerns is uh, just disproportionate impact on outcomes uh. When when not everybody is at the table. Um, and so. That, I just wanted to point to that one just because I'm very into multimodal transportation. Um. So I I I I agree with council member Payne. I think like, going back to what. Uh, and what actually council member Cooper was saying too, is like, what do we need out of this relationship? What do we need to support our decision making as a city, you know, and, you know, before, you know. Going so in depth into the MOU, looking at the code that produced it. Um. I I think that's important. And with with the lens of what do other cities do? I mean, this might have been like the way to do it when we created it. What's happened? E- even in the past couple of years to really innovate around uh, neighborhood engagement, community engagement. Um, so I I would like us to take that step back and while we do that, broaden our scope out um, a bit. Um, I'm curious what this means in relation to our um. Our advisory committees. You know, we have people that so uh, enter a competitive process. We select them to. Uh, give us recommendations on all the things in this MOU and, you know, whose voice is more important than the other. As we talk about engagement with the CNA and advisory committees and, you know, sometimes we make our own decisions, you know, based off feedback we get anyway, but it just. It seems like we're getting uh, what we're, we're getting um, what, we have two different kinds of engagement going on. And I'm just curious about how those things interact, uh, should we move forward with something like this. Um, and finally, you know, I mentioned earlier that, you know, when there was an issue with one of our, you know. Uh, uh, LTAC recipients, um, you know, we, we revisited that whole program to figure out. How we could do things differently. And we did that by engaging our social justice and equity commission. So this is something that I think it would be important to get their feedback on since representation is one of the biggest concerns here.
Thank you for that. And can I just tag on, because I did, I've been making notes and I never get to talk. Um. You hit on the organizational structure of the CNA versus advisory committees. And that is where I think it all lands for me, is that. That's where we build our equity is in our our interviews and who, how we build out an advisory committee, making sure that there's, there's. No gaps in representation where a CNA is self-selected. And that's a volunteer organization and it's, you know, so I think. You know, next year, when you look at this, more in depth, that's um, something to think about. And I think we should bring back Julie Hankins too to help. Uh, council member. Uh, Councilmember Cooper, followed by Councilmember Partially.
Well, that was one of the things I was talking to the city manager about the other day is to 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 think about Julie and and the work that I know the the N CNA did with Imagine Olympia. Right? Like cuz cuz um I my sense is Imagine Olympia is one of the largest community engagement efforts that the city has undertaken ever still today. And and we're about to really jump into our comprehensive plan again. And and so what is the opportunity to really get this right? In this comprehensive plan conversation because we're going out to the whole community to check in on on our future plan. So there's uh and I've been scrolling kinda through the comp plan the last couple of weeks. There's a lot of different places where neighborhood is mentioned and there's not like a section about the neighborhood. So and I don't know if it it needs a chapter, but that's to me like, how do we make sure that this comprehensive plan process takes it to the next level with and without the CNA? And then embodies the what we wanna get in our in our in our in our comprehensive plan. I'm I'm talking a lot, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Uh, last I have. Councilmember Partially, oh, okay.
Um, one, I'm, you know, you guys know this, I'm an introvert and I've been reading this MOU and rereading it and stewing on it. And you guys are all helping me. I appreciate all your comments and um especially Councilmember Payne and um Madron and well, all of you guys. I just wanna read this because it it's stuck with me since I've read it. This code provides neighborhoods will actively participate in city making decisions processes. And this agreement clarifies how those parties will collaborate. Um, I, two things, one neighborhoods, they don't actually, I don't know if the code says neighborhood associations, which goes to Councilmember Cooper's point. Not all neighborhoods have that. Also, to go to Councilmember Madron, we should be laying over what the neighborhood associations are desiring in terms of interaction and seeing if we have an advisory committee or council that already covers that bicycle and pedestrian, I mean, for sidewalks. I I just wanna make sure we're not duplicating effort and then making sure we're not leaving people behind. And I'm honestly thinking this MOU is really not clarifying anything. So.
All right, I've got Mayor Pro Tim Gilman and wrapping it up is City Manager Jay Bernie.
I I appreciate this conversation very much also. And I, so I I I just, I wanna respond briefly to that that question of is there an impact on public engagement? Is I'm I'm thinking about the Capitol Mall Triangle. And that the Triangle Asset Generation Group, that was all Southwest Neighborhood Association organizing brought that that work, both the 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 website and the analysis, the letters, um, a lot of participation in the early forums. Um, and it continued to be neighborhood driven, the the full houses at both here and at the Capitol Mall Meeting Room, um, as those forums have gone along. So I I think there is a pretty strong feedback loop that the that direct communication and invitation through the neighborhoods um draws people who didn't do the online portal survey and and don't don't aren't on the city planning email distribution lists. Um, so I think there is value there. Um. Want and just for whatever it's worth, one substantial change that that we spent quite a bit of time in the committee meetings was about our our initial interest was about limiting the staff burden. Both about the amount of presentations and what sort of advance notice or what sorts of subjects would be on the table. So um the things that Tim briefly described, going to a quarterly forum that's more formal presentations and then having monthly meetings for sharing, um, and having the work plan be developed after the council's annual retreat. So that it's it's a reflection of what's actually going to be worked on in that year. Um, anyhow, that was that is something that has um been clarified or further defined through these conversations. And then last, a lot of what I'm hearing, you know, like I said, that it, these are city creations, both the RNAs and the 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 CNA. Um, and I think to Councilmember Madron's question about, well, what's next? What's the best practice? I know that several of the cities to the north have created Department of Neighborhoods. And our formalizing that that outreach, um, um. It does. And it means it either means spending more money or it means shifting money away from the kind of public process that we've been doing. But I would argue that from my perspective, many of the things that you've been concerned about the CNA, but saying that the advisory committees or our public processes do a better job. I would say it's just a different crowd. And that my ex, I I'll just be, to be really blunt, my first experience in general government of doing the interviewing. I didn't have a single person I recommended that overlapped with my two colleagues and their recommendations. And I think overwhelmingly, we choo- we choose people who have similar resumes to the council members, people who work in policy. People who are already connected in the community. And that it's really hard for a neighborhood or community activist or somebody without professional education to get a seat on one of those bodies. So I would, I would push back on the notion that our boards and commissions or our our twenty-five hundred people who fell out of survey are more diverse or more poor or more renting um than than what we get through the neighborhood associations. So I I think it's important work to do. I want us to reach more people in town. But I'm just not sure that that characterization of one being much more inclusive and diverse is accurate.
I beg to differ. I think if you'd see, if you saw in person the people and you looked at their applications for our advisory committees, we've had the most amazingly diverse group coming forward than we ever have. And I think that's a lot of the work we're doing around equity. So I think we've come a long way from when you were in general government.
Well, and I and I don't mean, I'm, I appreciate having ethnic and racial.
Now, right, now I just opened another can worms.
You sure did. Um, no, actually Clark did. Um, no, he just made a comment that reminded me of like something I had scratched down here that didn't make the cut of things I was gonna initially say, but now I'm gonna say it. Um, you know, you mentioned the work plans. And one thing that is like a little interesting to me, and maybe somebody knows the reason why it was done this way, um. Uh, or maybe somebody's confused like I am, is for all our advisory committees, the work plans come through council. They come through community livability and public safety. They come to the full council, whereas this one appears to be um negotiated with the city manager. And that's interesting to me, um. Especially if it's gonna be relating to council work plan. Um, is there a reason that that shouldn't come through council? In some form, in in some process or another?
Make a note of that and City Manager Jay Bernie.
I know the hour's late, so I'm gonna attempt to try to maybe maybe wrap this up a little bit and take us to the next piece. So um, I wanna highlight um something that Councilmember Payne said, and that's that the reason there's not an action in front of you tonight is because we wanted to have some time to have this conversation. So we have spent some time in work group. And we wanted to have a check-in to see what's missing and what still needs work. And um I know that Larry and Melissa are listening in. I'm sure taking their own notes about what they heard tonight. And we'll reengage with them around this conversation. But I just wanna highlight um, some things that I wrote down in terms of what I think we need to work on in terms of the next version that we bring you. One is, I think this question about how we measure the effectiveness of this is important. And I think we should address that in terms of language within this agreement about how we measure and what that looks like and what we agree to. Um, I think we can go a little bit further in maybe not fully developing the engagement plan before we can finish this, but maybe outlining what that process looks like and and what how we're gonna do that and what that engagement plan looks like. Um, the OMC eighteen eight six was brought up. Mark and I were just talking. It's been a, it's been a while. And I think in my world, I in my mind, I'm thinking we need to do this to help inform what goes in there. But really, I think we need to look at them together and figure out how how they align and what needs to change, both in the OMC and in this document. Um, we talked a lot about equity in this and how we do that work. Again, I think part of that engagement work, um, and and that plan will help us get at that. And and looking at that a bit deeper. There was some conversation about better defining roles and responsibilities uh in terms of who's in charge of what in this document and and what the expectations are from from each side. And I think we can do some more work there. Um, the other one that I wanted to highlight is, um, and again, it's I think it's really around the engagement plan is how we address a larger engagement with the neighborhoods, the small ends, as we heard, and is our way to do that through this work here and and through our partnership with the CNA. So those are some of the things that I wrote down. I know Tim's furiously taking notes over there as well. Um, and we as a staff will circle up and uh around all this conversation tonight. Figure out where we go from here, next steps, certainly engage the CNA in this conversation about where we go from here and then come back to you. Um, and and with a with a plan from there. So I think I caught everything. If I missed something, please let me know.
I'm sure we will. All right, that was a nice, robust conversation and uh I look forward to seeing what uh comes forward next year. Uh, thanks, Tim.
Right, thank you.
So, uh, that concludes, you know, our regular business uh for this meeting. And now it's time for intergovernmental committee reports and referrals. I'll start with the mayor's report. Uh. There was discussion, well, I'll start with uh next week, our meeting is on Monday night due to Halloween. Uh, that was um, I think it was pretty unanimous that we didn't wanna be here on Halloween. Uh, so we're gonna be meeting on Monday, if you're listening out there, and and we will be having a full business meeting, so there will be public comment. Uh, then as well, we were looking at the upcoming agendas and some of them are getting pretty pretty loaded up to get us through the budget cycle and and other things we need to wrap up. So the idea we put forward was to add back a meeting on Monday, uh, November sixth. That is the Monday before Election Day. And you know, we used to always have it on Monday before Election Day. I don't know what happened that slipped by us, but uh it would ease the burden on the the business meetings that follow. So uh, do I have consensus that we would meet on Monday? All right, I know some people are out of town, but we could.
Yeah, I just need to have a Zoom link for that one.
Easy peasy. You know how to do that. So uh, I I, yeah, okay. So thank you. I think I think we got consensus on that. All right. So I'm gonna go uh now to Councilmember Cooper for his report.
Thank you, Mayor Sully. I I don't have anything to report, but I'd like to thank you all for that conversation. I I think that was one of the better examples of just deliberation and conversation that I've seen in our city council in my time. It was great. Like, nobody got hot. We all have an opinion. And we did the important work and I just wanna lift that up.
Awesome. And we didn't have to be on the floor. All right, Councilmember Quinn.
Oh, thanks. I appreciate that. Um, I will continue to lift it up. Um, nothing to report tonight.
All right, Councilmember Partially.
I agree with those two. You guys made me think, and that's fun, um, and challenged my viewpoints. Um, I only have one thing to report, and that's the Finance Committee meeting for October eighteenth. Um, I'm not gonna talk to you about the bulk of it cuz you're gonna get it again and again and again before we pass our budget. Uh, but I am gonna let you know that we did have the Joint Animal Service briefing on the budget. And if you'll remember, Joint Animal Services was trying to get off spending out of reserves and making sure the assessments covered their prices as well as the um kind of big uh money bomb of that the building is not uh gonna be habitable in five years and how we're gonna go about that. Um, the good news is we were gonna get to the point where assessments were covering the budget over a three-year period. And so this year was gonna be a substantial increase in our assessments, but due to some unfilled positions, we're actually only gonna be mi- minorly above the twenty twenty-three. And we are going to be discussing who we are hiring to do an actual needs assessment in terms of an animal shelter. Not in terms of a building safety and occupation, which is what Lacy did. And we'll be getting that study started um after our discussion on Wednesday night, or I guess that's tomorrow night. Um, and then we had a big uh rollout of the operating budget with fees, rates, special revenues and funds discussion and a property tax update. And you guys are gonna get all that again.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for Lisa? Sorry, Councilmember Partially, Chair of Finance, Mayor Pro Tim Gilman.
Thanks. The the uh main thing I needed to report is last Wednesday, Intercity Transit um decided on three finalists for the general manager position. And tomorrow we'll begin interviews and Thursday afternoon we'll have our deliberation. Um, we have um, our current interim and two other transit professionals, three astounding people out of a whole bunch of amazing resumes that came in. Um, so I'm I'm really heartened by that process. And and I also wanted to give a a shout out that that pro housing application that we heard today that was turned around in a month and is a substantial piece of writing is as a reflection, um, uh, Councilmember Madron and I've met to talk about that, the housing with the housing team today. And I really believe that it is the the competence and the strategic vision of those individuals working on the on the program that's getting us these affordable housing projects and grants that are coming in. It 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 really is pretty special, what we have going right now. And I I just wanted to lift that up. But that that pro housing um, trying to get a homeownership program going uh was just a remarkable piece of work to my.
Here, here. Uh, Councilmember Payne.
Yes, um, just a couple items uh to mention this evening. Um, so I have uh myself and I believe several other members of the council as well have been in individual conversations uh with the uh president of U of USC W three six seven, um, Michael Whalen in regards to the uh a a potential merger of a Safeway uh Kroger, uh, which could uh impact um grocery workers in our community. Uh, and there is a concern around the what it could do uh in terms of creating a potential food desert as well, uh, because we have several um, stores that are in close proximity to one another uh in our community. And this merger would certainly impact the workforce and and obviously impact uh those of us who are customers and rely on affordable foods and goods as well. Um, the other aspect to this is that we, the reason this is important for us is because um, we know that the the uh Olympia Strong uh process and throughout that, the survey uh concluded that I believe it was ninety-six percent of respondents who were renters uh said that they were struggling with some sort of uh with an ability to afford groceries. Um, and so this is very concerning to me. Uh, and so I I just wanna flag it tonight for all of you. Uh, there is going to be a town hall, which I'll be speaking at. Uh, it is remotely. It will be this Friday, October twenty-sixth from six to seven PM. Uh, I believe you can uh RSVP or register to attend if you would like at ufcwthree six seven dot org slash RSVP. I believe it's Friday. Or Thursday. I'm sorry. Today's the twenty-fourth, right? Thursday, the twenty-sixth. Um, and so if you uh are able to attend, I encourage you to intend to hear more about how this potential merger could impact uh not just uh Thurston County, but also Pierce as well, the South Sound Region uh entirely. And so uh if you can, I encourage you to attend to learn more about this this issue. Thanks.
Thank you, uh, yes.
Actually, I do have one more thing that I failed to mention. Um, and in addition to that, I I was wondering um, you know, we we heard from uh Leslie Cushman tonight, uh, as we have heard from other community members before in regards to uh the shooting of Timothy Green, uh, and and why is the prosecutor taking so long? Uh, and so I have already spoken about the fact that I don't think it's appropriate for elected officials to uh interfere um, with the 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 process of the prosecutor. However, because it seems like we're we're getting so many questions from the community, um, is it appropriate for us to um, write a letter to the to the prosecutor? Is that something that we can do uh so that the community knows that we we are in fact asking for a status update uh on this investigation? Is that appropriate?
Um, I I'm gonna send this to uh either our city attorney or or city manager Jay Bernie as her is pending litigation.
Yeah, I'll take this one. And Mark, you can you can jump in here if you need to. There's a a super fine line that we we have to walk in not exerting any undue influence on a pending investigation, political or otherwise. And so that's the line we're we're trying to really toe here really delicately. That being said, uh That being said, I'll say, and I've shared this with you, I'm as frustrated as anyone that we're in this moment in time. And I think I've shared that I think the legislature really needs to take this on in terms of timing and how long these things take. I just think it's a missing piece of this puzzle. All that being said, let me talk to the chief more about this and see what might be appropriate, if anything, that we can do to just express the desire to see this wrapped up. And I will, I'll commit to that.
Thank you, City Manager. I appreciate that. I suspected that to be the answer, but I think it's important for people to, to actually hear it because we, we obviously keep seeing people come back asking us, what are we doing? And I don't want them to think that it's falling on deaf ears. So thank you.
Yeah, I had a question about that. I know we just talked about our legislative agenda last week, but is this on our legislative agenda?
Jay.
I got an attorney in my ear, sorry.
Well, you, you just mentioned that you think that there's a legislative fix that's needed. And we just talked about our legislative agenda last week. And I don't, I don't think this is on there as, as something that we're asking for.
No. So I'll, I'll circle up with Susan in terms of this conversation. I don't know what our ask would be other than to raise some awareness around this, but I'll give that some more thought. I see Councilmember Cooper's hands up too on this.
Followed by Councilmember Quinn.
I feel like our ask is that the elected prosecutor needs to do their job.
Okay.
Like the ability to, to pass the case around the state with no, no timeline is, is, is the problem. And so either a timeline or some definitive direction that you have to take the case in your county. Unless it's your own, your own sheriff's entity. May, maybe that's a conflict, but to me, that's the job that they were elected to do. And, and you know, so, and, and I'll just point out that if the prosecutor has said this is not, that he doesn't, he thinks he has a conflict in this job, let's bring him in here and ask him what that decision process is in public so that the public will know. Because he's not involved in this case.
Okay, Councilmember Quinn.
A bit of a shift here, but sort of related. So so earlier during public comment, I heard something about policy, right? And then also that there's actually community members that look at our police auditor reports, which is great. And that they didn't really get that much from it. Now, to be fair, we did ask the police auditor to specifically look at, you know, starting off with a narrow scope of work, looking at use of force. And we have since, you know, requested that she also look at policy, policy updates or basically to broaden, broaden what, what she's reviewing. And we had a conversation not too long ago as I meet with her and Debbie, Assistant City Manager Debbie Sullivan. And we're talking about her mid-year report. Now, October, we're, you know, we're a little past mid-year, but some things came up. So can we talk about when, just on the police auditor portion of it, when are we going to have that fuller picture for folks? This is not in in, you know, it, it's not related to the Timothy Green case, but just talking about the, the police auditors. Let me know if you don't know what I'm talking about.
I may not know what you're talking about, but I do want to say that the 2023 mid-year auditor report was distributed to the Social Justice and Equity Commission on Monday. And it's going to be on the council consent agenda next week. Did I not answer your question?
That's exactly what I'm talking about.
Okay, great. And I do want to say that it is posted on the website right now.
Oh, it is posted currently.
Available, yes.
I did not realize that. Thank you. Something would have been good to bring up with Leslie. Go ahead.
I, I do want to say that Leslie was at the Social Justice and Equity Commission meeting on Monday and she received the report.
Okay. I'd love this conversation, but I think it'd be better held offline. Okay, City Manager Jay Bernie, I'll let you speak.
Thank you. I appreciate it. So the city, the city attorney was in my ear about this conversation. And what he's said to me is it, it would be appropriate for the mayor to draft a letter that just asks for a status update. So if you'd like us, we could draft something on your behalf that meets that criteria and get it sent off.
You're happy to do that.
Okay. So we will, we will take that action.
Thank you so much. All right, Councilmember Madron, your report. Nothing to report. Darn. City Manager, your report.
I have nothing to report.
All right. We'll see you next Monday night. No further business. Thank you. Bye.